That was beautiful.
Yes, welcome everyone and good afternoon. This is Board Chair Linda Chin. And first I want to recognize the students from Mount Royal Elementary Middle School. We saw, I think, the wind ensemble and the orchestra. And thank you for that beautiful rendition of "Ode to Joy." This was a perfect time, this beautiful spring day to hear that. And we also want to thank their director, Mr. Russell Kirk. I know putting that together is a difficult thing to do. So thank you to the students. Their names were scrolling, so hopefully you saw that, and to their director. And to everyone else, I would like to welcome you to the public meeting of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. Just a reminder, if you are watching with us, please mute your phone so that we will be able to follow the business and the meeting with ease. At this time, I'm going to read the roll call for the board members. And just a reminder to board members, as we go through the meeting, it is helpful if you will identify yourself as you speak. And this helps us in terms of the minutes and keeping record of who is speaking. So this is the roll call, Commissioner Bondima.
Oh, yes, I mean.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden? Okay. Commissioner Reed? Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Roberts? Commissioner Sykes? Okay, I am here. I know some commissioners might be, are there some issues happening with the folks who might be on site? Did you hear me? This is Commissioner Richardson, did you hear me? Yes, I saw, I got Commissioner Richardson. I see Commissioner Roberts, okay. And, okay, so I'm just gonna double check, Commissioner Reed and McFadden. I see Commissioner McFadden?
Yes ma'am, I'm here, can you hear me?
Commissioner Sykes? Yes, thank you. Commissioners, okay, so I have two absent that I see, okay. So I see seven present and two absent, okay. Is there a motion to reopen the meeting?
So move Bondima.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second, Robert.
Thank you. And those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes, here.
Brooks?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
James?
Yes, yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm in favor, so that's eight in favor. Has anyone else joined us that I did not call? All right. There are no opposed or staying, so this motion passes, eight in favor, two absent. This evening, I would like to take time to recognize the passing of city school employees and students. As always, as we do these moments of silence, as we know that they will be remembered fondly by both the greater city schools community, as well as their close family and friends. And tonight, we send our deepest condolences to all. Ernest Johnson, who served city schools for 24 years and seven months as the department head for and a teacher at Northwestern High School, assistant principal at Guilford Elementary Middle and Northwestern High School, and a secondary teacher at Reginald F. Lewis. Mr. Johnson unfortunately departed on January 1st, 2021, will be missed greatly by his family, friends, and city schools. Sharon Turner, who served in city schools for seven years and 10 months as a food service worker at Western, at Baltimore School for Design, at Monarch Academy, and at Northwood Elementary. Ms. Turner departed on March 18th, 2021. Jennifer Kogwana, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Kogwana was an adorable scholar at Claremont School, who was popular with the bus staff, classroom teachers, and paraeducators, therapists, nurses, cafeteria staff, and custodians from the moment she started to the end of the day. She captured the hearts of all through her silliness, her sassiness, her happiness, and perseverance to learn and work hard despite her many medical conditions. Jennifer smiled and laughed often. She liked music, especially during morning circle time, and would move and wave her arms as she danced to the beat. She loved to color and was an expert in filling in details of pictures. Jennifer also loved to draw, write, and complete instructional activities. She enjoyed working with interlocking puzzles, sometimes up to 52 pieces. Jennifer was a leader among her peers and often encouraged them to participate in various activities. During days when Jennifer was not feeling well, she still persevered, especially during the distance learning period. She had wonderful attendance, missing only occasionally due to doctor appointments. She became weaker over the past two years and found it hard to walk for long distances, often relying on holding another person's hand as she slowly made her way down the long school hallways. Last year, just prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, Jennifer obtained a wheelchair to help on those challenging days. She was so excited when it arrived, complete with a pink frame. Jennifer's love of eating also became challenging. She was a silent aspirator. She had a silent aspiration and was often led to pneumonia and sometimes hospitalization. As a result, her intake of food and beverage by mouth became limited to a few bites of soft foods of pleasure and nutritional feedings provided through a gastronomy tube. It was hard to deny this sweet child the regular diet she was used to, but she ate her applesauce, pudding, or yogurt with a smile. Jennifer will be missed. Jaleel Jones was a ninth grade student at Carver Vocational Technical High School. He came to Carver from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Elementary Middle, where he was well-liked by those around him. At Carver, he was just beginning to familiarize himself with his classmates and staff. His teachers described him as cordial, and Jaleel was also actively involved with the plantation, Archon Urban Farm. This was an agri-hood in the city of Baltimore that spreads love, supports the community, and brings healthy food to the city. He had a passion for farming and enjoyed reaping the fruits of his hard labor. He also loved seeing other people happy. His fellow farmers affectionately referred to him as Farmer Ajai. He was a vibrant and cheerful young man who will be greatly missed by his family, friends, the school community, and fellow farmers. May his soul rest in peace. Irvin Tally Jr. was an 11th grade student at City Neighbors High School. He was a quiet but incredibly funny student. It is safe to say that he kept all his teachers and classmates.
It is safe to say that he kept all his teachers and classmates.
Irvin was a protector.
Irvin was a protector and made sure that all City Neighbors students were safe. On a regular basis, the school leadership would see him waiting at the front door to walk with a group of younger students to the bus stop. Irvin will be tremendously missed by his sibling.
Amaya, who is a student also at City Neighbors High School. Family, the City Neighbors High School family, and friends. Please join me for a moment of silence to remember these persons. Thank you. Now, is there? Sorry. Is there a motion to approve the prior open session minutes?
So move, Bondima.
In a second? Thank you.
Thank you.
And those, those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Okay, Brooks?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
James?
Yes, yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Okay, Roberts?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm in favor, I'm checking one more time, is, if any other commissioners have joined? Okay, so there are no opposed or no abstentions, this motion passes, we have eight in favor and two absent. Is there a motion to approve the closed session summaries?
So move, Griffin.
Thank you. And second?
Robert.
Thank you. And again, those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
James?
Yes, yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Okay, Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yeah.
I see you, okay. And I'm in favor, so we, I'm checking one last time, okay, we have no one opposed or abstaining, so that's eight in favor, one absent, thank you. For board chair comments, first, I just want to say that I was really happy today to visit George Washington Elementary School this morning, along with Vice Chair Richardson and Commissioner James. It was really good to be back out to see students at a school. I observed, and I think we all did, happy, engaged students in classrooms that were safe and well-prepared for teaching and learning. We saw a variety of delivery approaches that were developed cooperatively by the teachers at that school under the excellent leadership of Principal Bridget Wrightson and the supportive guidance from her I L E D Tammy McIntyre Miller. And I just want to say, you know, as city schools continues to expand opportunities for families, for family choice, whether it's virtual or in person, I would encourage parents to continue, if you have questions, to read the information that's available on the parent pages about reopening or contact your schools. But you can also do what we did today, and that's to call and see if you can arrange a visit. I think once you go in and see what it's like, you'll be very, very happy and might help you in making some of those decisions. I'd also like to acknowledge the donation of $5,000 towards the education supplies at Northwood Elementary from Chesapeake Employers Insurance Company. And also a donation of $5,000 towards education supplies at the Reengagement Center from Jean and Sidney Silber Foundation. And acknowledge the donation of 422,000 PPE masks worth approximately $125,000 from United Way and Hanes Brands. And this donation was approved at our March 11th public board meeting. Thank you to everyone for those donations. Let's see, board members, is there a motion to approve the quasi-judicial map? Just have one.
So move, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner McFadden, is there a second?
Second, James.
Thank you. And those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
James?
Yes, yes.
Okay, McFadden? Okay, Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yeah.
I see Commissioner Reed?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
And I'm in favor, okay, no one opposed or stating, so this motion passes, nine. And no absence. All right, thank you. I'm going to now turn it over to Dr. Sansa Lisa for CEO comments.
Thank you, Chair Chin, and thank you to the board. I would like to begin this evening with an update on our expansion of in-person learning opportunities. Yesterday, we welcomed participating high school seniors, pre-K students, and middle-grade students back to our buildings. For these grade levels, we have in-person, pre-K through nine and 12. We now have almost 17,000 students who are participating in in-person learning. Also, as we have anticipated, we are seeing a steady increase in grade levels that have been back in-person each week. A good example of this is grades kindergarten through second grade, where we now have 35% of students in those grade levels participating in in-person learning. That's an increase of about 5% from when in-person learning first started for those grade levels. Next Monday, we will be welcoming participating students in grades 10 and 11 back to the classroom. And at that point, all students who wanted to resume in-person learning will have had the opportunity to rejoin their classmates and teachers. A big thank you to school leaders, school leadership teams, teachers, and families, including our operations team and others who have really helped make that possible. With regards to ITD, or technology issues, as we reported at our last board meeting several weeks ago, many of our staff and families experienced connectivity issues, especially when trying to log on to virtual learning. The problem was in part related to the number of students and teachers using network and video-intensive applications like Zoom while in the classroom, creating a workload that did contribute to overwhelming key components in our data center. Several other districts in Maryland, including Howard and Montgomery Counties, experienced the same problem. Our ITD department has taken several mitigation steps over the last two or three weeks to increase network speed. Reconfiguration of our network and our data centers to improve network speed, and issuing guidance to help reduce the use of video-intensive applications like Zoom in the classroom as much as possible. Yesterday, our network team monitored the district network traffic throughout the day, and our network performance is continuing to improve as a result of these changes we've made. This is particularly good news, considering we now have more students stay in-person than we've had since prior to the pandemic. The network team has continued to do additional optimizations on the existing network equipment to help reduce network constraints while working with vendors to permanently replace affected components and our longer-term permanent solutions. So we are in the midst of several procurement and bidding processes where we can really leverage the investment, the one-time investment that the federal ESER funding does, really present us the opportunity to do some of the long-term work over the next month and year to really get in place the kind of infrastructure that heretofore we just have not been able to invest in. So I appreciate everyone's patience and really just want to thank our IT team for really all of their efforts in attending to both our immediate needs now, as well as looking at our long-term needs as well, as we really do work to beef up our system capacity. In the first three weeks of pool testing, this is our COVID asymptomatic testing, we successfully tested approximately 12,650 elementary students and staff. We identified 59 positive pools in that period. But through our individual testing, we determined that the vast majority of those positive pools were really due to only one positive person in the group. So this continues to have our city schools positivity rate at just 0.4%. At the high school level, we administered 829 tests, and during the first week of that testing at the high school level with two positive results, and this equates to a positivity rate of about 0.24%. So these low positivity rates really do show and point to all of the mitigation factors working in sync to really identify, to add to that, the identification of positive asymptomatic individuals early. And what it means is that we really are seeing the prevention and reduction of spread of COVID in our schools. And then with regards to vaccinations, I just want, as we wrap up city schools' mass vaccination effort, I am just really pleased to extend a huge shout-out to Chief Jeremy Grant Skinner and the Human Capital Team, his Human Capital Team, for just outstanding service they performed in coordinating COVID vaccination for district employees over the past 11 weeks. City schools launched our plan for free employee vaccinations on January 18th, which was the same day the state of Maryland entered Phase 1B, which expanded vaccination eligibility to teachers and school support staff. Within six weeks, we invited every active city schools employee to sign up for a COVID vaccination, and more than 5,000 staff and contractors were vaccinated. To date, that includes, including many others who have been vaccinated outside of city schools, we estimate that approximately 2/3 of our staff have received at least one dose of the COVID vaccination. The final date for employees to sign up for a vaccination coordinated by city schools was April 2nd, but we strongly encourage every employee who has not yet been vaccinated to do so as soon as possible. As of yesterday, with preregistration already open, everyone over age 16 in the state of Maryland is eligible to sign up for a vaccination directly through the state. I also just want to highlight the incredible work of our IT department in quickly setting up a mechanism for fast, easy signup, as well as our communications office for getting the word out quickly and effectively. This really is a remarkable team effort and achievement to which really all of you can point and really should be proud. So a big thank you again to everyone who was part of the success of that effort. And then finally, I just want to let the public and the board know that we have begun the planning process for how we will reconnect and reengage with our students as we plan for summer, next school year, and the years to come. We are really calling this effort as part of our blueprint, reconnect, restore, and reimagine. And it really is an effort designed to engage and partner with the entire city schools community to solicit your ideas, your thoughts, hopes for our young people, and really give everyone a voice in this planning, visioning, and implementation of what is truly a critically important plan. This includes parents, families, students, school leaders, teachers, staff, and community partners, including community and faith-based organizations, as well as business and philanthropic communities. We will be hosting stakeholder input meetings throughout May and June, followed by full public engagement and feedback in July and August to review the finalized plans. I strongly encourage everyone in city schools community to participate in planning the best path ahead for our young people. We are at an inflection point, which is both an incredible opportunity to reimagine the possibilities of K-12 education, as well as an awesome responsibility to support our students. Work groups are convening weekly, focused on key planning areas to include student wholeness, literacy, math, innovations for secondary students, virtual learning, and community engagement. We are also now considering how extended learning opportunities might support our students, particularly through high-impact tutoring programs. City Schools has been a national leader in this area, implementing tutoring programs throughout the pandemic with promising results that we are really looking forward to sharing. We are looking closely at these models to determine how we can strengthen and expand them moving forward. For families and the community, we also want to let you know that this summer, we will offer an expanded menu of summer programs that will serve a wide range of learners with unique needs. We are going to be working with families to match students with the most appropriate programs based on their academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs, including opportunities for enrichment like music, art, STEM. I got a wonderful, I got to see a wonderful post from our principal at, was it at Thomas Jefferson, who shared that she saw a kindergartner on the way to music class who said to her, and I think I'm quoting correctly, "I am so excited to be back." And so we know for lots of our young people. And so, we know for lots of our young people, enrichment like music and art and STEM is going to be incredibly important this year. We're thrilled to be working and expanding our partnership with some of our community partners. Social interaction with peers, I can tell you as the mom of middle school students that just in two days being back, the interaction with other young people has been key. Also, outdoor learning, opportunities for young people throughout our city to be outdoors using the community as classroom, as well as academic interventions. We want families to know that both in-person and virtual options will be available. We have heard from a number of families already that having both those options, in-person and virtual, will be important, and we will be offering those. The timing of our recovering planning also allows us to consider the school calendar for next year and beyond. We will bring forward initial recommendations in the coming weeks and will engage our community for input and feedback. To reiterate, I strongly encourage everyone in the city schools' community to participate in planning the best path ahead for our young people. This really, again, is a pivotal moment. We have an unprecedented one-time investment of funds, so while it won't necessarily change our budget moving forward, we do have resources earmarked that we will also be sharing with the community, as well as the board, clearly. But these one-time funds do give us the opportunity to really build a real reconnection and reimagining on behalf of the young people in Baltimore City. So, thank you, Madam Chair. That includes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Santalisis. And I think we're gonna, I don't know if, did I see a hand? I thought I saw a board hand, but I'm not.
Yes, you saw mine.
Okay. Commissioner Reed, yes, comment?
Yeah, Dr. S has been a tough year, the COVID year. So strategically, I mean, we've gone through a lot of stresses, a lot of negatives, and we still have a lot of wood to cut. But what's a good, positive, strategic takeaway that can make the system better going forward based on what we learned the last year?
Well, and Commissioner Reed, what I love about your question is there's more than just one point, which I think is a good sign. I think that we have many areas that we've been able to learn from and see. I think one of the most important, though, that would be a carryover into all of the planning that we need to do over the next two years, really is the idea that we saw over the last, now, my goodness, 14 months, we saw the community of Baltimore come together around its young people. And I think the benefit of that is we saw, for example, an unprecedented investment in technology that previously did not exist, right? City school students had a ratio of 1 to 4 in terms of device to student. We are now very, very close to 1 to 1, and that is because of the mobilization of young people, of elected officials, of the philanthropic community, and frankly, this board. And so, really exploring what does now this technology enable us to do? I think the other piece that we've seen is that flexibility for young people and families matters, right? We always knew that not all young people were the same. And now, what we have seen is that there are different ways of engaging different young people. There are some young people who know now, like the kindergartner that I referenced at Thomas Jefferson, who knows, look, I want to be back in school, right, with my music teacher, hugging my principal's legs. But we have other young people who have said to us, actually, the technology gave me flexibility I didn't have before, so I might be able to do school at a different time or in a different place. And I think we have the ability now to begin to leverage in key areas some of that learning. The different time and space, and I'll share at upcoming board meetings, our tutoring here within Baltimore City showed we were able, with community support, to lift a diverse core of tutors that are representative of our students and of Baltimore City. So, we have college students across the city, many of whom were graduates of city schools, who are now tutoring younger students in Baltimore City. And so, the benefit is, yes, the literacy gains that we're seeing because of this, but also young people getting to connect with people that look like them, that are from their neighborhood, who can say, look, this is what life looks like beyond, and connect in real ways. So, I do think part of what we are working really diligently, and I can't stress enough that this is not a one-summer get everybody back. This is really about how do we look, over the course of the next two years, leverage some of the best of what we've seen this year, some of what we've learned, to have real key areas where frankly, we begin to push on doing our work differently. So, as challenging, as in a lot of ways traumatic, right, as the last year has been, for our young people in our community, it really, there really have been silver linings and learnings that I am excited for us to grow from, that I think will help us actually come out of this in a stronger position than we found ourselves, you know, 14 months ago, when this latest crisis first hit us.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yes. I had a quick question about, like, thinking about what you just mentioned, and I completely agree, like, there are so many opportunities now in understanding these different modes of learning for our students. Is there any thought around pulling data for these last couple of months? And I know that it won't be necessarily all, like, comprehensive, but thinking about how the attendance changed when it was just completely virtual or completely in-person to this mixed attendance batch that we get to see in the last couple of months of school this year? I would be curious to see what that data looks like and helping to think about, like, what pockets of students are we reaching and how having this blended learning opportunity is impacting our students across the district? Just throwing it out there, it's something to think about to help us have data to show that there's a possibility with this type of learning to either A, reach more students, or B, maybe it's not, you know? But just to let the numbers speak for themselves in that way, I think would be interesting to see.
Yes, and I think we will have some different cuts of the data, you know, very honestly, you know, you get thrown in the world when we were, and I can't say we started out with, you know, pre and post data that would have been ideal, but we do have some of those points. Like, we have been watching to see what does the attendance look like the last few weeks for young people that are in-person. Do, we are looking to say, well, who are the young people, particularly at the high school level, who have actually queued in more than they might have been previously? And again, we were, when we were meeting with some of our national partners, we were surprised at some of the initial lift we saw from our early readers who were participating in virtual learning. And so, we have some data cuts that say, you know, young people who participated in virtual learning in first grade, now again, it's a small sample set, so I want you to know, is the math, one of the mathematicians in the group, it's a small sample size, but what we saw is that actually, virtual tutoring for young people that attend consistently helped Baltimore City be one of the leaders in moving the largest, we moved three times the numbers of our lowest readers out of that lowest reading category, and tutoring was part of that. But it was also tools that teachers told us they never could use before because all young people didn't have the technology. So, it won't be perfect data, and I want to flag that for you, but those are just some snippets of things that we're looking at that we can definitely bring back and I think have further discussion with the board and the public. And also, Commissioner, I think what it does is push on us as we move into the next two years to actually be deliberate, more deliberate, now that we have time and we're not in the swirl of, you know, well, we are still in the swirl of daily racial unrest, but we are, do you know what I mean? Like, to have now time to plan, to collect the kind of data that will help us get an even fuller picture. So, it's a very important point and one well-taken.
Absolutely. On the flip side of that, I also think about staff, school staff data, like, what is it that they saw was helpful to them to be able to exist in this blended learning space? And you know, what gaps might there still be? So, I think that would be helpful for us, too.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you for that question.
Commissioner Reed, did you have another question, or is your hand? You can mute it.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you. Thank you again, no, again, thank you, Dr. Santalisis. And again, I hope everyone really heard, you know, the invitation to hear the voices of everyone in the community in terms of this reimagining and reconnecting and moving forward for our students, because this is going to take our entire community to really make this a success and to do what we need to do for our young people. So, thank you again. At this time, I'm going to, we're going to move to a presentation, one of our information items, and this will be a first reader for Policy JKA Student Discipline.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Commissioners, Dr. Santalisis and members of the public. Thank you for having us here this evening. We will be presenting on, this is actually Policy JKA and the associated regulations. I have my colleagues Lori Hines and Dr. Deborah Brooks with me, and I wanted to take this opportunity while we're loading up the slides here just to thank everyone who's been so deeply involved in this process. It actually began last year, and those of you who were on the board then will remember that we actually got all the way to the, almost to the third reader, and then we hit COVID. And so, we started all over again this year, and I just wanted to acknowledge that a huge amount of work has gone into this, particularly by Lori Hines, Dr. Brooks, and James, I don't know if you're here, but in the background, and also Chief Sivin has gotten involved and really been supportive. But as you will see towards the end of the presentation as well, with our slide that gives a summary of the engagement, our community partners have also been really fantastic about reading the policy and the regulations in great detail and giving us some really helpful feedback. We've gone back and forth with them a number of times, and I think we've ended up with a much stronger proposed policy and set of regulations as a result. So, I just want to thank everybody, and hopefully, everyone can see the slide now, so we will go ahead and dive in. Oh, and I think I forgot to introduce myself. Sarah Warren, I'm the Executive Director for Whole Child Services and Support, and I'm going to turn it over now to Lori Hines.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize in advance. We just happened to come on during the time that my daughter has her drum lessons, so if you hear that in the background, that is what you hear, and I apologize in advance. As Dr. Warren stated, we have been working on this policy and the regs for quite some time, and so, we are happy to be here for first reader on this evening. The first major change that we had with this policy is, as you know, in 2018, state law was passed that prohibited suspensions for students in the grade band of pre-K through 2. And so, although we had guidance and we had procedures within our office to deal with those students, we, it was not in policy or in the regulations. That was a major addition to this policy and the regulations. And I'm very proud to say that even before that state law was passed in 2018, we already had procedures and policies in place to help those students in that grade band because we recognize that oftentimes their behaviors are underlying issues that could have previously resulted in suspension. So, we had procedures in place such as, in lieu of a suspension, we had specified one-on-one aids that we would send to the school, and they would stay there with the child so that the child could remain in school while a plan was developed to help that student with the behavioral issue. So, that's just one example. Also, school administrators were required to develop and to monitor those interventions. So, I just looked at my screen and, so that's the screen that we should be on. Thank you. And school, again, school administrators were required to just develop and to monitor some interventions prior to just suspending students. So, we, again, I'm very proud to say that we had those procedures and practices in place prior to that state law being passed. But again, a major addition was the actual implementation of the procedures and embedded within this policy and the regulations. Next slide, please.
So, we received feedback from a number of partners that the language that we had in the document and the policy and in the regulations was a little bit inconsistent and maybe confusing. So, we spent quite a bit of time just combing through the document and trying to clear that up. We defaulted to the term restorative approaches throughout the document, which really is a catch-all. This is a definition that's within state law, but it defines our approach to discipline in a very broad way, and it allows us to encompass all of the many types of things that we might do, including social-emotional learning, trauma-informed and healing-centered approaches, as well as formal restorative practices, all of which are part of the work, and more. So, we chose that broader definition. It's throughout the document. The other thing I wanted to note is that we also spent quite a bit of time going back through just to make sure that the document, both the policy and the regulations are well-aligned to our blueprint and our thinking and work around student wholeness and the whole child. So, I think that that is more strongly reflected in the documents now as you read them. We can move on. There we go.
Also, to continue along the vein of making sure that our policy and regulations were in alignment with the state law, we also looked at how we implemented restraint and seclusion. It required us to identify the school types and also to identify whether we were implement or prohibit restraint and seclusion. We also had to review and revise whether if we were going to implement restraint and seclusion, who those staff would be that would be authorized to implement restraint and seclusion, what professional development would be in place and required for those staff. And as you will see, as we begin to talk about the regulations, City Schools has proposed that we would not prohibit seclusion for our students and that restraint would be a last resort to be implemented for our students. We also clearly defined those positive behavior intervention strategies and supports, as well as the behavior intervention plans and trauma-informed interventions. We also made sure that we were really clear in identifying our policies and procedures to be developed within our local school system that were aligned with our practices and our beliefs around positive behavior interventions, as well as how we're monitoring those interventions that are being practiced at our schools.
So, now, we'd just like to go through the actual policy and the revisions and some, I'm sorry, the policy and the regulations and some revisions that were made with each of those documents. So, in regards to Policy JKA, just a high-level revision, as Sarah stated before, we really combed through both the policy and the regulations to make sure that language was consistent in there and that, especially that the language that is associated with our whole child support. We also wanted to include equity language in there and make, to be inconsistent with the board policy ADA. Also, we wanted to make sure that our language was aligned to other Baltimore City policies that were already in effect, as well as state law, because as we know, state law changes, you know, quite frequently, and so, we did want to make sure that we were in alignment with that. And so we did want to make sure that we were in alignment um, with that as well. Lastly, this last round of revisions, even after we had revisions after we presented to the um, policy committee, is that it was a recommendation that was made to us for the policy committee and we made that change, just stating that the, the piece about restitution, that we wanted to make clear that if um, a family was unable to pay restitution, um, that, you know, that they, that would not be a um, that would not be a, a factor if they were not, we wanted to make clear that, you know, if, if families were not able to pay, that that would be um, okay. And secondly, we wanted to make sure that if it was a manifestation of that child's disability, that restitution would not be required um, for that as well. Next slide, please.
And as we looked at the JKA RA regulation, we pretty much functioned as a cross-functional team to include district office staff, school-based staff, community partners. And you'll see that uh, in one of our slides when we talk about engagement. And particularly around this regulation, as we looked at exclusion, physical restraint and seclusion guidelines. And so again, as I stated earlier, City Schools proposed that we uh, revise and prohibit seclusion um, for our students. And seclusion does not align with City Schools' practice of restorative approaches. As well as we really clarified um, our requirements uh, and incorporated de-escalation training for, for multiple staff members in response to some po, to policy committee feedback. And I just want to clarify that when we talk about de-escalation training, it's verbal de-escalation, it's not hands-on where we're talking about restraining students physically. Again, physical restraint is a last resort. And those persons that are trained are both general educators, special educators, school-based leaders, bus aides, bus attendants, bus drivers, uh, paraeducators, our cafeteria, uh, support staff. So it's multiple staff that are trained uh, that support our students, both students with and without disabilities. Next slide, please.
Okay, so for JKA RB, the regulation, this is the regulation that directly deals with suspensions and expulsions. So as I previously stated, once the state law was passed in 2018, we had to embed um, what our procedures and practices were around the um, around that law, around the prohibition of suspensions for students in that grade band pre-K through two. So you will find that addition here um, in this regulation, JKA RB. Also, as Dr. Brooks stated before, we had to clarify some of our training responsibilities. Um, and that was also in addition to the policy committee feedback. They wanted us to, because we just said that training would happen, so we had to make some clarifications about who um, would be doing that training and about what types of trainings that we would be holding. Um, also, we wanted to add a piece around the um, appeals process. So previously in this regulation, there was an appeals process, which is policy BLA um, through the board, that is a appeals process for suspensions, um, for extended um, suspensions or expulsions. There was not, however, mention made of what the appeals process would be for a short-term suspension, which is a suspension which is one to three days. And so we did add a um, appeals process if families chose to appeal um, a short-term suspension, one to three days. So we did that. And then um, we added that in at the beginning. But once we got some of the feedback that I'll talk a little bit about later in this presentation from some of our stakeholders, we extended the appeal process from a short-term suspension from three days to 10 days to be in alignment again with policy BLA for an extended suspension.
We also wanted to, we also wanted to clarify uh, really quickly that for students who currently have an IEP or a section 504 that have transportation on uh, either of those plans, that if they were suspended, this also did include removal from transportation for behavior-related. So we wanted to clearly um, put that in this regulation so that it was clear for, for families as well. Also, uh, for a JKA RC.
If you could go back, I'm sorry, Laura, if you could go back one slide. Yeah, there we go. Thanks.
This one is fine. Yep, thank you. So for here, there was just minimum uh, revisions. One, we just wanted um, the Office of Special Education uh, to be clear. We are no longer the Office of Specialized Services, but we are the Office of Special Education and Student Support. So we just wanted that to be aligned. And also, we suggested a referral for a manifestation um, of a student with a disability. That meeting be held by the IEP team or the section 504 team um, when it approaches five days uh, instead of eight days. And this allows for those teams to discuss behavioral intervention strategies, to review behavior intervention plans, order functional behavior plans, and look for ways to be able to support the student so that the student can remain successful in school and address those behavioral needs or behavioral supports that the student may need. Next slide, please. Uh, for this regulation, we also uh, wanted to make sure that we included general guidelines for all students with disabilities, again, to include our section 504 uh, students, as well as students with IEPs regarding um, additional or uh, educational placements um, for those students, as well as um, clarifying the start of a suspension or expulsion for all students with disabilities. And again, just being very clear that this includes students with 504s as well as students with IEPs. Next slide, please. For this um, JKA RE, we just wanted to also then make sure that we referenced the other administrative regulations. And we added language for those students that are currently going through the referral process where there's a suspected disability, so that uh, staff was very clear that these students must um, continue through the referral process, but be treated as a student with a disability, that we expedite those evaluations, um, that there be a manifestation meeting held, that those behavioral uh, supports be put in place for these students, so that if there is determined this is a student with a disability, that those same um, supports are in place for these students. So we just wanted to make that very clear in this regulation. Next slide, please.
Okay, so at 6:02, I was hoping drum lessons are supposed to be over. Again, I apologize. Um, I've tried to move as far away as I can, but I think you can still hear. Um, this last slide, we just wanted to touch on our engagement. Our engagement with this policy and regulations has been very, very extensive. Um, not only with our stakeholders, but I think as Dr. Warren stated at the beginning of this presentation, we have had intense collaboration even um, with inside partners. So with several uh, partners, as Dr. Brooks is on, with special ed, um, with our legal department, with administrators. And so listed here, you will just see some of the engagement that we have had and how that engagement took place. I do want to highlight our most recent engagement. Um, our latest round of feedback was received by Disability Rights Maryland and the Public Justice Center. So if you um, remember, our first reader was scheduled, I believe, to come in either February or March. But because we had received such extensive feedback for them and we wanted to be inclusive of that feedback and really um, be cognizant and, and take into account um, that feedback, the first reader was moved until today later on. And so we combed through those, the comments and the feedback one by one. And then after we did that, we embedded the changes within the policy and the regulations. And then we again met with, we had follow-up meetings with both of those um, stakeholders to really go through and to say, you know, which ones were accepted. And if not, if there were some that were not, to explain the reasoning as to why we could not. And I think we developed a really good rapport and um, partnership with those stakeholders. And we are thankful that they, you know, gave us such extensive um, feedback because it just strengthened this policy and the regulation. So again, we thank you to all the feed, uh, all the stakeholders who provided that feedback with us. Um, March the 26th, right before the day that we left for spring break, we had a meeting with the um, Public Justice Center. And then on April the 8th, we had our meeting with Disability Rights Maryland. And again, we had already embedded the changes that they, the suggestions that they recommended. Um, but we wanted to follow up and meet with them to follow up on the um, the actual recommendations that they made. Also, um, you will see that we've had several phone conversations with PCEB. PCEB um, has just recently submitted some feedback for us. And so that feedback will be incorporated into um, second reader. But it was very minimal feedback, because when we sent them the updated um, the updated uh, recommendations from other stakeholders, some of their feedback had already been addressed um, within that. So that is a little bit about our um, engagement. And at this time, we will be happy to take any comments or questions. So I first saw um, Commissioner McVattan's hand.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. I just want to um, thank you all for the work that you put into this. I know that it was a collaborative effort. And I just also want to say, um, as a member of the policy committee, I appreciate the way that you all incorporated um, the feedback, both from the committee and from the various stakeholders um, within the City Schools community to really make this um, a, a transformative policy. Um, I think that will really support the work of City Schools as we move forward. With the regulation, JKA, um, the, the RC, um, this is on slide nine. I appreciate the urgency around moving the uh, referral for the manifestation meetings um, to five days versus the eight. I just want to know and, and see if we can maybe comment briefly. Um, do we have the, do we have the internal and staff capacity to support that type of um, to, to support that change? If that, if Dr. Brooks, if it makes sense what I'm, what I'm asking. Um, and, and does, do school-based staff have the support that they need to make sure that this happens? Um, because we know that it is necessary to do these meetings um, as soon as we possibly can to benefit um, our young people and to support our young people. But I just wanted to raise that a little bit.
So thank you for asking that question. And yes, we have been working with our IEP uh, chairs, as well as our 504 chairs, as we are reviewing data and we share the data with them so that as they begin to know, uh, students are approaching, um, looking at short-term suspensions as well as long-term suspensions. If a student is approaching uh, the third day or the fourth day, to begin to look at, does the student have a behavior intervention plan? What are the, some of the interventions that may be needed for the students so that they can be successful? Uh, so we have been working very closely with our team so that we can begin to implement um, the five-day rather than waiting for the eight-day, so that we can get those interventions in place sooner than later.
I appreciate that, um, Dr. Brooks, and that's really.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Ms. Hines.
I'm sorry, I just want to add to that, that um, our offices, Dr. Brooks and my office have been working um, very collaboratively on this piece. So when a referral comes into our office, the Office of Student Conduct and Attendance for an extended suspension or a long-term suspension, as soon as we are notified, we have a process in which we notify, if that student has an IEP, we immediately notify Dr. Brooks' office as well. And Dr. Brooks has established, she has dedicated staff that is working directly with our office to address those concerns. So in response to your question, like, is that feasible? Can it be done? Because if you think about it, five days is a whole school week, right? And so even if there is a school that has a part-time IEP chair and they only come in, you know, twice a week or whatever, that person would be there within that five days, within that, you know, within that school week. And so we have um, been very creative and we have been very collaborative and working between the two offices. Also, that person that is dedicated in Dr. Brooks' office, as you stated, is now, we know it's a best practice. We know a manifestation meeting doesn't have to happen until the, the 10th day, right? So before, we had eight. But as we were looking and students were being suspended repeatedly, we wanted to be even more proactive. Like, okay, you got this short-term suspension, it was one day. Then you have like, and realistically, a child could really be suspended 10 times in a short-term suspension before a manifestation meeting would be, you know, have to legally be held. But as we were seeing students being suspended, you know, repeatedly, but they were for shorter periods of time, we have someone that now can, we, they can flag that. And then, as Dr. Brooks said, we want to get them the supports and resources that they need as quickly as possible. So I just wanted to note that collaboration between our offices and the immediate notification um, when a suspension comes into our office.
I appreciate it. And it will solve, I think, a lot of, of, of larger issues with our young people and how they're able to progress and move forward with that type of support being in place. So I just want to celebrate you for that, um, and the collaborative work that went into that. That is, I, I just, it's really great to hear that on behalf of our students um, that need this type of support the most. And then also, Ms. Hines, um, your daughter in that lesson, keeping an incredible steady beat, might I add. It wasn't horrible um, in the background. So please tell her to keep at it, keeping those lessons, staying in those lessons, because she doesn't sound bad, by the way.
Thank you. She just got the drums for Christmas. She said she wanted drums for Christmas. I was like, okay. I don't know where it came from, but she has been keeping with it. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, I did see another um. I think Commissioner Griffin, yeah, Commissioner Griffin, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Um, I don't, I have a few questions. Some of these are just for clarity's sake and just so like the broader public can also understand. Um, and I know that I saw within this policy, a lot of the equity questions that Dr. Durant's office has worked with, a lot of departments with City Schools on, addressed. But like, could you talk more about what equity questions you all utilize when helping to revise this policy? Um, that have informed the changes that are being made?
Yeah, so we also had an outside agency help us because we wanted to not just put language down just because it looked good, but we really wanted to be inclusive. So not just with the equity policy, but again, we wanted to um, be consistent in including policies that were um, a part of board policy that are embedded that have to do with this policy. And so we were very intentional in looking, um, again, we had an outside person come in and to look, like, for us to help us with that, um, that language. But we lifted language directly from the equity policy that had been already, you know, approved by the board. And we looked at places where there needed to be that language within our um, policy and our regulations. And so that the two would be, um, the two would be consistent.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, and I'm really happy to see that when I was reading through the policy itself and even looking at the presentation, I could tell, like, there was a lot of thought and intention that went into this. And you mentioned the work that had been done before and then, you know, the pandemic came and it's like, okay, now we're gonna rework it a little bit more because of the experiences that may have changed. So I do want to give kudos and appreciation for all of that work. Um, I have a question about the other student groups. Because I know, you didn't really touch on it much, but I'm sure there were, outside of the student congress, there were other student groups that you talked to, just to lift up some of the other student voices that went into the revisions that were made to this policy too.
So there was, as far as the um, the student input, there was a little bit more um, input, honestly, last year um, with that. And so we held um, focus groups for various students, like at district office. Um, and then, as you stated, the, the student congress group, we met specifically with the board of the congress group. And we had them, like, we reviewed the policy and the regulations with them, like, one by one, and just asked them to give us input, because it could be like a little overwhelming to just hand them this policy and say, give us feedback, right? And so we really like combed through it um, with the board and um, got their feedback around, you know, suggestions and input. But that did happen last year. So this year, um, because we had been through that process already and because of like the, the in-person thing, last year also, we did have focus groups. So we asked um, students from different schools, like, to come and we had focus groups to get input around that. But this year, we did just send the re, the revisions that we had already made to that, to um, to them, to give us input or any feedback that um, they may have. Um, and we did not receive any um, feedback or recommendations from that student body for this particular year. But there was, um, there was several input last school year.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I have a question specifically about the K through two suspension policy. I noticed that, like, statewide, it's, you know, no suspension, but we are talking about having um, the short-term suspension still be three days and the long-term be considered five days. Correct me if I'm wrong, because I want to make sure I'm clear on understanding that. I, I'm curious as to. on understanding that. I'm curious as to what the rationale is behind that.
So I want to, I'm sorry to cut you off, but I want to clarify, because you said something about the, this, so as state law mandates, we are not allowed to suspend pre-K through two for any amount of time unless there is a federal law that says that we have to suspend a student for that. And an example of that would be if they brought a firearm to school. Okay? So we don't do suspensions for pre-K through two. In some very egregious cases, a suspension is allowed, that one to five days, but it has to come after that child has had an assessment by a mental health clinician at their school. And it has to also be in collaboration with the school administrator. But they still can't just do a suspension. They still have to get approval from our office. And so we have, if we compare the numbers, and I don't have them in front of me right now, but like last year, I'm talking about, because we don't have hardly any suspensions this year. But last year, or after this policy was passed and we had our procedures in place, the suspensions were drastically reduced for that grade ban. There were very few suspensions in that grade ban. And again, they were for safety reasons that we, like, had to remove the student. But as I stated before, there are procedures in place that in lieu of a suspension, because, as I stated earlier, it's, a child is not just going to, you know, be throwing stuff across the room and doing things that are behaviorally inappropriate just because they want to. Usually, there are some underlying issues, right? And we know that suspension does not address the underlying issues. Because if they're throwing chairs and we send them home for two or three days and we don't put anything in place when they come back, very likely, they're going to throw some more chairs, right? And so what we've done is, we, instead of removing the child, we have dedicated one-on-one age just for that grade ban that our office can send out. And they will sit with that child so that the child can remain in school. And then the school will have that period of time to come up with a plan to see how they can best support that student or what resources or supports they can put in place for that student instead of just removing them.
Thank you so much for clarifying that. And I hope that helped any of the public that was listening to, that may have missed that in the presentation, to have a better understanding of that process. That's very clearly outlined what you just said. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
My last question, and this is really probably in the realm more of implementation, so it may be more of a statement than a question, but just thinking about a possible menu of options of restorative practices and trauma-informed care. I'm not sure if that exists. I remember what the discipline handbook looked like when I was Dean of Students and what I had to go through. So not sure if that's a column in there now. So it's like, this is actually your first step, before you hit the suspension column. I think that would be really helpful for any of the practitioners and staff in the schools to understand that process. And then, as I was reading this, I was thinking about the space that we're living in, where there's a lot of blended opportunities and students miss so much learning, when they, even if they're on in-school suspension, or if they're, if they are sent home for suspension. So thinking about some of those virtual implications and how to support students in that way and continuing their learning, were just some things that popped up for me that I wanted to throw out there for you all.
Yep. So if I could address your first statement, in our Code of Conduct, as I stated before, there are different levels of, not only suspension, but there are different levels of disciplinary responses. So a Level One is a teacher intervention. A Level Two is an administrator intervention. Level Three is a short-term suspension, which is one to three days. Level Four is a long-term suspension, which is four to 10 days. And then Level Five is an extended suspension, which is 11 or more days. And they have to come to District Office to have a hearing to determine what, you know, what, what the days assigned are for suspension. But for each of those levels in the Code of Conduct, there is a menu of suggested restorative approaches that can be done with that student. And we are very clear in the Code of Conduct in stating that suspension is a last resort. You should not, just because a child did something that falls under Category Three and you can suspend them, you should not move to that measure as your first response. That, that is very clear, that that should be always, suspension should be the very last resort. So that was in response to your menu. So we do have that menu in the Code of Conduct. And then your second statement in regards to the blended learning and the opportunities. We have, so I'm very proud to say, and I don't want to move into suspensions, but we have had, because we just did this report, so this whole entire school year, I believe we've had four, only four short-term suspensions, and we've had only one extended suspension. And in that extended suspension, usually a student would go to AOP or an AES, depending upon if they have an IP. But in our circumstances now, because we are, we were in a virtual setting, that student was still allowed to participate, like, virtually. We did not send them to, you know, the physical space. So they were still, you know, participating in virtual learning. So we will be looking at that, that option going forward in the new year. Because even prior to COVID, a student was always, who received an extended suspension, they were assigned to AES or an AOP, but the parent always has the right to refuse that placement, you know, for whatever reason. And so if they did not, then that student did work packets at home for that period of time. But now, because we were virtual, they were still able to participate with their teachers one-on-one. So we will be looking at some alternate options going forward for next year.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Brooks and Ms. Hines. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. And I see Commissioner McFadden's. Is that another hand or is that the same hand?
Listen, sometimes I forget, but no, that was a mistake.
That was the same hand, okay. But I do want to just reemphasize, I just want to thank everyone, because before, this is not the first time we've redone this policy. When we did it about five years ago, when COMAR changed and we had to make updates, it was a very tedious process. And I will say, I felt very alone in this process, because I was just trying to make the changes, because that was my office. But the last few years, there has been awesome, awesome collaboration. I'm definitely not alone. Dr. Brooks and her office has been very instrumental. Dr. Warren, in the student wholeness piece, bringing that student wholeness piece, Tracy Durant in the equity piece, Legal, Josh Simmons, I don't want to start calling names, because I don't want to leave anyone out, but Josh has been excellent in us. And so before the process, we would make all of our changes, then we would send it to Legal. They would have, we would have to wait for them to review everything that we did. Then they would send it back to say yes or no. And it was like a back-and-forth process. But Josh has been, really been instrumental in this process and been with us every step of the way. So when we're having meetings, when we're making decisions, when we're trying to see if we're going to make this addition or reject this addition, he's right there with us so that we don't have to, at the end, then send it and he reviews everything. He's been an integral part of this process. So I just want to say thank you to not only our internal team, but also our stakeholders. And I am very proud of the relationship that we have built. Because many years ago, when we did that, it always felt like us against them. And I have tried hard to incorporate so that it is, we all should have. And I will say, we do have the same goal, and that is what is in the best interest of children. And so we have really been collaborative and working together to really, you know, bring our, even though we agree, sometimes we have to agree to disagree, we've really been intentional about making changes that will make this policy, strengthen this policy and the regulations in order to do what is best for children. So I just want to say thank you to everyone who has been a part of this policy and the regulation and the recommendations to strengthen it.
Thank you, Ms. Hines and your team. And as you said, this has been quite, quite an experience. You've been, you've been working with this for a while. I just want to say, as a part of that extended team, I just remember some of the work that was done with community around looking at the discipline portion and, I think it was last year, I got to remember, a year before. But it has been quite a, and this is an ongoing process. So as, as we continue to make it better. Tonight was the first reader, again. And so just a reminder that if folks have additional feedback, that, as you saw on the slide, that you could still, you can still address that, you could send it in, you can share that. And then this will be coming back to the Board for a second. Thank you. At this time, fellow Commissioners, I'm going to be reviewing the consent agenda. And I've got to ask my board colleagues, let me know if you'd like to have item removed from the consent agenda. If you're asking for something to be removed, please indicate the question that you might have, so staff will be ready to respond. Commissioner Marine, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like to pull 12.02 Ingenuity.
Okay, can I, let me, I'll pull it, but let me, let me start at the beginning and I'll come back down, just in case there's some before. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. No problem. I believe, hold on, I'm trying to get all my papers and ones but, 8.01 is the, is the first item. Is there anyone that would request to have that? That's the Curriculum Review, ESOL Curriculum Review. 8.02, which is the World Language Curriculum Review. Okay. I'm going to pull 8.03 for presentation, which also covers 9.02 later. And so that one is pulled. 12.01, Translation, Interpreter and American Sign Language Services. Okay. 12.02 has been pulled, the Ingenuity Project. What, what specific questions might you have?
I guess I'd like to, to them, educate us more about the diversity idea, but also probably lie, whole paragraph, 15F. Paragraph F was really intriguing. I think we should learn more about the ideas. And then I have questions.
So it's a whole, whole section F. Can you state some of the questions? Okay, the other question, all the questions are about paragraph F, is that what you're saying?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. I just want, I just want them to be prepared. So that's why I'm just asking, if you have specific questions you might be bringing up.
Thank you.
Okay. 12, okay, 12.03, Educational Tracking and Consulting Incorporated? Okay, so I have, we have two items that are pulled in, 8.03, which is a renaming request, which will go along with 9.02 and 12.02 Ingenuity. Okay, thank you. So as we move into public comment, speakers will, from recognized groups, will have an opportunity to speak for five minutes and then we'll open to the remainder of the public. And then I'll come back to the Board to see if, based on public comment, there are any additional items that you would like to have removed. First, we will have Zach Taylor, who's representing the Baltimore Teachers Union. Welcome, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening. Thank you. We know the Board receives a lot of information about the district's projects and how they're progressing. But we also want to make sure you hear the frustrations and concerns we've been experiencing over the last several weeks and that you consider them as you lead the district. More than anything, we just want to do our jobs, teaching students, building relationships, and helping them achieve their potential. But, but we're very frustrated. We're constantly being asked to do more with less. And over the last two months, safety plans have been decreased rather than improved. Educators are frustrated because the district ended the two-pod 48-hour rule for students. And prior to the expansion of in-person learning, we watched and participated in numerous town halls where district officials spent hours explaining to parents and various safe, explaining to parents and staff, the various safety measures that were being put in place to protect students and staff. And the two-pod 48-hour rule was one of the most touted and detailed plans presented to parents, ensuring that their children would be kept safe. And yet, as of this week, this rule is now canceled, but there weren't any town halls about this cancellation. The announcement wasn't on City Schools Twitter or on its Facebook page. The Health and Safety Standard Operating Procedures Guide still includes the old guidance, which details the two-pod 48-hour rule. And teachers this week have been having a rough experience with parents who know nothing of these changes. And frankly, many of them are expressing feelings of, of being misled. They were told that the Health and Safety Guidance would be one set of policies, when they are now a much different, much more lax set of policies. And how many parents still just don't even know these changes are happening? Where is the priority to keep them informed and proactively informed? So teachers and PSRP's are frustrated. We're frustrated that this reduction in safety is coming amid another surge of coronavirus infections, this time with variants that are leading to more children getting sick. Baltimore City is now back above a 5% positivity rate and the new case rate is approaching the highest totals recorded. The current safety, or, excuse me, the current rate is already much higher than the rates that we experienced earlier in the summer and in the fall. Educators are frustrated because another element of the Health and Safety Plan, the mobile testing vans, doesn't exist at all like we were told it would exist. Parents and staff were told that anyone exhibiting a COVID-like illness, student or staff member, would be prioritized for testing by the mobile testing van, and that this would also be used as a follow-up for the pooled tests in elementary schools so that we can determine who is sick within 24 or 48 hours. Well, the van is overbooked nearly every single day. People are waiting up to 96 hours to get those initial results and then to have that follow-up testing. And testing for those exhibiting a COVID-like illness was altogether canceled prior to spring break. Yet, this procedure is still in our Health and Safety Guide, and we still need it to happen. The Union has urged the district to fulfill its plans by getting the resources it needs to carry these plans out. If it takes one, two, or three more vans, we need to make that happen. We're frustrated because all of this is happening while the majority of educators have been called back to teach in nearly empty classrooms with just terrible Wi-Fi. The district had time to prepare the broadband. We, as BTU flagged this issue months ago, prior to students returning. And we've had nothing but constant Wi-Fi issues since then. There have been entire days when nearly all teachers and PSRP's in the district have been cut off from most of their students, since 70% to 75% of our students are still in the virtual environment. Yesterday, I talked with a high school teacher who had six students return for in-person instruction, while another 121 remained virtual. In one period, he taught one student with 33 online, one student in person. That class started with the students online saying, what about us? This isn't fair. What about us? This teacher now needs to toggle between online teaching and in-person teaching at the same time. And you can imagine, it's much worse for elementary school. I talked to a second-grade teacher yesterday, nine students in person, 16 simultaneously online, and the 16 are constantly calling on a return to the way things were. Young people know when things aren't what they need to be, and they know when they're not getting what they used to get. And of course, all of this has impacted students' work on assessments, which have also been interrupted by the district's substandard Wi-Fi. And in many cases, these assessments contribute to teacher slow scores, which impact our high-stakes evaluations. And yet, the district has made no revision to these slow guidelines despite constant outreach and the obvious issues with our Wi-Fi. So we're frustrated, we're demoralized, we've worked incredibly hard this year, and we need some changes. We need action on our slows, we need updated Health and Safety Guides, we need parents proactively informed about changes, we need a mobile testing van, we need reinstatement of the two-pod 48-hour rule. We need all of this to be part of a plan to just recognize that we do have an increased safety need among rising rates. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. We now have Mr. Larry Simmons representing the Parent-Community Advisory Board.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me? Good evening. My name is Larry Simmons. I'm the Treasurer of the Parent-Community Advisory Board of Baltimore City Public Schools. We're excited about this evening and the new policy regulation that, that came to our first reader tonight. And in support of parents and students of Baltimore City Public Schools, we believe that parent leadership and authentic and trans- we believe that parent leadership and authentic and transparent relationships are key to success of any communities, in any school community. We also believe that every school should have, to designate a parent as a point person for other parents to connect with. When they have questions or suggestions, this person and their contact information should be posted publicly within the school. There should be one school plan and expanded school performance plan that includes academics, budget, plans for family and community engagement, and family community communication plan. These plans should be created collaboratively, collaboratively under a more robust version of the School Family Council. And then finally, accountability to families at the school level should happen around a single school plan, which should be reviewed and worked on throughout the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. I don't have other of the recognized groups, and so I'm gonna turn it over to our board exec for additional public comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have four participants for public comment tonight. The first is Shirley Ukoko-Baria. And she's going to be speaking about Policy KCA, KCA, Family and Community Engagement First Reader. It's a video.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Shirley Ukoko-Baria, a PhD student at Notre Dame of Maryland University and currently a secondary teacher in the city. I acknowledge and recognize the challenges we are facing now in our educational system. That is why it is critical that we use a full spectrum of resources to support all students, especially the underrepresented, disadvantaged, and disengaged. Speaking as a teacher in an alternative high school, students who drop out comes from low-income families, ethnic minorities, or with disabilities. That is why a comprehensive system of support is needed to ensure that all students achieve. Forty years of research confirms that family engagement improves school readiness, student academic achievement, and graduation rates. According to research done by the Consortium on Chicago Schools, there are five essential support systems needed to transform the current system that would lead to student achievement. Those five are leadership, instructional guidance, teacher professional capacity, school climate, parents, school, and community. All five have to work together to create a sustained influence and impact. Because if one component is missing, it will fail. However, let us put families and communities first. They are not bystanders, they are our partners. They are considered the most critical element in our children's education. I had an opportunity to observe and listen to the Family and Community Engagement Policy Committee's meeting last February 13th. Policy revisions were discussed during that time, and tonight is its first read. I want to propose in addition to the policy that is up for revision. With the help of leadership, please include data sharing. It is not enough for the school data or student data to be accessible online, but parents need to know what those numbers and data represent. To be effective, data should be delivered to lead to increased knowledge that brings empowerment. Families and communities must make the data and information as to their own and use what they have learned to make informed decisions about their children's education. Data that is effectively shared with families and communities may influence the way they support their children. The ultimate goal of data sharing is for families and communities to understand the data so they can action to support students. Thank you for your time. Have a good afternoon.
Next is a video from Ms. Rebecca Yanowar with the Teachers Democracy Project, and the topic is the Family and Community Engagement Policy.
Good evening. Teachers Democracy Project has engaged with families and community members around the draft engagement policy, and we now have some feedback to share. Parents and community want to see more infrastructure to support people who want to be engaged. We believe every school should designate a parent point person whose contact information is posted publicly. This would ensure that parents have access to another parent at their own school and to parents across schools. We want families and community to have training in how to organize and establish a parent group. Schools need mandatory apps, platforms, and strategies to allow for conversation between staff and families, as well as among families. Far too often, these are one-way communication platforms. Currently in the policy, there is little to no mention of how School Family Council Subcommittee's function. This is where critical work happens and should be highlighted. We know that the guidance documents for School Family Council meetings do not currently build in enough time for issues that stakeholders consider important. Time for stakeholders to surface issues needs to be built in and a part of the guidance for this policy. This guidance should also be made public. We need to consolidate school reports and plans into one meaningful and collaborative document. Currently, schools have multiple plans that they create in order to be compliant with different departments. We would instead like to see one expanded school performance plan that includes academics, plans for family and community engagement, and a communication plan. These plans should be created collaboratively under a more robust version of the SFC. Far too many schools struggle with communication and engagement. And if these plans were created collaboratively with families at the table, they could be much more effective and meaningful. Accountability needs, to families needs to be more meaningful. The current proposal is for families to be surveyed once per year. This is not enough frequency nor quality. If there is a robust school plan created with all stakeholders, it could then be reviewed and worked on throughout the year. Surveys could still be a part of assessment, but the plan's collaborative nature would allow for more ongoing and authentic accountability and assessment. There should be some standard items communicated to families throughout the year. Information about the School Performance Plan, School Family Council, School Partner Selection and Contracts, attendance and performance data, and the principal selection process when appropriate. Recordings or notes from meetings like the SFC and PTO should be publicly posted, similar to the way the school board meetings are. There should be class-level reports of what the scholars are learning and will be learning, along with materials to help families support their children academically. This should be shared at least quarterly. Finally, access to meetings for many families has increased, both at the school level and at the district level since the start of COVID. We strongly suggest that we continue to make in-person meetings accessible online. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, next we have an email to be read from Robert and Daphne Reinhardt. Okay. "We would like to request that, we would like to request that Baltimore City Schools immediately adopt the CDC's three foot, three feet physical distance guidance, distancing guidance for K-12 schools and require all city schools to adhere to such guidance. The six feet distancing requirement, which is no longer required by the CDC, is unnecessarily disrupting the learning environment for many of our city's children who would otherwise be permitted to attend in-person learning for the maximum number of days per week. As just one example, our second grader very happily started in-person learning in his classroom four days a week when an in-person learning option became available on March 1st. About two weeks into his adjustment, we were informed that additional students would be returning to his classroom after additional polling at the school was conducted and that his learning environment would be changing yet again to now include only two days a week in person and three days virtual due to classroom size and the six feet distancing guidelines mandated by Baltimore City Schools. We strongly urge Baltimore City Schools to follow the CDC guidelines so that more students who want to learn in person for the maximum number of days per week may be added to classrooms in a safe manner, adhering to the required three feet distancing. Our students have already paid a steep price for virtual learning and not allowing students who want to be in person based on a six feet rule that is no longer required by the CDC is needlessly unfair and disruptive." And she sent, they sent several links. "We believe city schools should keep to their promise and follow the science, including CDC guidance, which as of May, March 19th, and adopted by Maryland on March 25th, requires at least three feet, reduced from six feet, of physical distance for K-12 students." And she also sent, they also sent links to CDC and the Washington Post. Thank you for your time to this matter, Matthew and Daphne Reinhardt. Sorry, give me one moment to pull up the last video. And the last comment is from Mr. Dante DeToblin, Vice President, United Way, Neighbors United, and it's about Policy KCA.
Good evening. My name is Dante DeToblin with United Way of Central Maryland. And I'm excited to read about these revisions to our Family and Community Engagement Policy because it includes neighborhoods. And because we know that our schools are nested in neighborhoods, we are now able to better gauge what's going on in terms of our children and families and how they're doing. We're excited to work with you in making sure that you succeed. And I hope that we also get to build the capacity of our city schools teams so that they will have the bandwidth to actually make this a reality. Thank you very much.
And Madam Chair, that completes public comment. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Gant. So, board members, based on public comment, are there any additional items that any board members would like to pull from the consent agenda? Okay, if not, I'm gonna ask if you allow me to go out of order in, just for just the, the one item that was pulled other than the one that we're going to have the presentation for. And so we're gonna start with item 12.01, which was pulled on the Ingenuity Project. Staff here.
02. 02.
I'm sorry, 12.02. Sorry, I wrote the wrong number, but that's the one.
Thanks, Commissioner Chinio. We have Dennis Jutris and Laura Ohanian that'll be joining us for responses.
Okay. Madam Chair, can I just throw out my, my first point and then my question?
Go right ahead.
Okay, I guess, one, I'm really impressed with the Ingenuity Process Program. It's really dynamic, it's really successful. But I guess, one thing I see is able funding is going down, private funding has to go up. And I guess another thing I see is, I think it's a really great thing that the, the district is trying to be better in terms of diversifying the number of kids and the type of kids that get to use Ingenuity. But I get to, I guess the thing that's driving my question is, like I said, paragraph under, under item F. And then looking at item F, it brings me, brings to mind for me, in a perfect world, I would hope that all of our kids get what's delineated under item F. I know money is finite. Therefore, we, we can't always do what we want to do. But how can we create a perfect world where all the kids get the benefit of the resources and also the umbrella of attention?
Be smart enough, not the fucking weak.
I, I'll jump in, I guess, to begin. So Commissioner Reed, I mean, obviously you're spot on. You're 100% right. In a perfect world, every student of Baltimore City Schools would have that kind of attention to detail that a smaller program like Ingenuity is able to afford, based on the way they've structured themselves. I mean, they have two academic deans, one for middle school and one for high school, whose sole job is to kind of monitor the data, to monitor the social well-being of students, and then be proactive in the outreach. And obviously, they've, they've, they've done what the district is now starting to do with more of the peer mentoring and the peer tutoring pieces that Dr. S spoke about earlier in tonight's board meeting. So I'm hopeful, as a person who's been in the district now 22-plus years and seen the evolution of these things. I, I don't have the answer, Commissioner, for how do you take that which works well in Ingenuity and translate that over to the district? But I think what you can say is we can build an argument that, look, we have 20-plus years of what Ingenuity has been able to do and has continued to grow. And we can see a sustained level of success. So if it's able to work there, how can we take lessons learned from there and leverage it and bring it to more students across the district? Which, which is absolutely the right question. Unfortunately, I don't own the answer to that, but I would be more than happy, we work very closely with Ingenuity out of the Gifted and Advanced Learning Office. And we too are very much struggling with and trying to support the diversity of identifying of learners and get them as early as possible and support them and nurture their families. I will say as a side note, we did have an Ingenuity parent that just reached out yesterday to the CAO and the CEO. They've been participating in a district-supported program of supporting emotional needs of gifted learners. So helping parents and families learn how to work with their gifted learners. And that was not exclusively to Ingenuity. So there is some of that transference. And there is a crossover effect because you're right, what's good for these kids in this engineering program should be what's afforded to all students.
I'm just gonna add to that, just because I have a pretty intimate knowledge of the decision-making Ingenuity had in making the decision to set these programs and this structure up. And, you know, this is all part of, I think, the first part of what you said, Commissioner Reed, around their expansion of efforts and equity. And they know they are recruiting students who may not have had the same wraparound services that other kids who are gonna go, going into Ingenuity have had. So they created these structures in order to ensure those kids are successful and have the support they need. Because, you know, based on the recruitment, we know they have the ability, but not, unfortunately, not every student has the same experience. And experience gives you background where, with this very targeted support, they can ensure that those kids are getting additional support that they need to make, to be successful in those rigorous classes. So. And I, I would argue, Dennis, that our ILP process, the Individualized Learning Plans, is a way that we're doing some of that. However, it's that layering in of those additional supports that really they, they do have the resources to do, partly because of the additional private funding they also have. I didn't know if you wanted me to respond to the able question. I know you had mentioned, I didn't know if it was a question, so I wanted to.
No, that's just a fact. That's, yeah, that's a fact, yeah.
I, I actually, though, Commissioner, would like to, to add that I don't think Mr. Jutris has done ample an ample job conveying the work he and his team have done over the last four years. So when we talk about the supports that are in place for Ingenuity, I also want to point out that with far less resources per student, Mr. Jutris has led this district in a far more expansive identification that is far more diverse, that is reflective of the demographics of our school community. He has expanded into every zip code, frankly, far more successfully than Ingenuity had prior to us pushing them to do so. So I think as we uphold Ingenuity, which we clearly value, I, I think it is also necessary to realize that it was the district who exerted pressure around the need to reflect black, brown, low-income students in every sector of this city. Brown, low-income students in every sector of this city as part of their program. And it was Mr. Jutress who led the actual equity mapping of where resources were throughout the city and found that they still resided in the same overly resourced, I don't want to say overly resourced, but well-resourced zip codes in this city. And it is within the last four years, as the board has seen on occasion, and I think this is a good opportunity to queue up, we need another presentation. We have deliberately, again, with far less resources per student, frankly, been servicing students who previously were not. Now, again, we all, clearly, Ingenuity is coming as a program, but I've got to tell you, I got to push a little bit on this notion that Ingenuity is the only entity that knows how to identify and support advanced learners. Because under Mr. Jutress's leadership, we actually, I would say, have expanded and pushed that organization to do some of what his office has done. Now, he will not tell you that because of the kind of person he is, but as someone who has benefited from his leadership as a leader, I'm not going to sit here and have Ingenuity held up as the only entity that is moving gifted and advanced learners. Because they have a small collection of schools relative to the full collection of schools that we have. We have been cited by the state for some of the largest increases in EGATE, which is state-recognized, gifted, and advanced learning of any jurisdiction in the state. And he and his team from Baltimore City have been the ones, frankly, coaching other jurisdictions on how to get greater diversity and greater representation of Black, Brown, and low-income children into these programs. So I'm sorry, I'm a little defensive of him and his work, but we talk about data, and he has, he and his team, the principals he's worked with, have the receipts. So, again, we welcome partnership with Ingenuity. You don't hear any, you know, discord around that, but I just need to set the record straight. This myth that Ingenuity is the only entity that is serving, like, highly-ready young people in this city is one that I think we need to take on and recognize, yes, we are in partnership with them, but Mr. Jutress's charge was to, matter of fact, and I gave it to him, was you need to move this so we are not dependent on an outside organization to identify our young people in underrepresented zip codes in these programs. So I just needed to say that because he took my push, he took my charge, and it shows in the data. So, you know, as I had to Commissioner Griffin, just because I see her on the phone in terms of her data, this is an area where we have the receipts, and the state has acknowledged that we have the receipts. So we work in partnership with them, but this myth that Ingenuity is the only place that happens is clearly one that gets under my skin on his behalf because of the work that he has done. I just had to add that, Commissioner.
I didn't try to get under your skin, but I'm glad you said what you said.
Thank you. I know you didn't, but I just had to say it.
I have nothing to add to that.
I saw Commissioner Bondima.
I'm getting confused with programs. I think this program, Ingenuity, has been in existence for at least 15 or 20 years. Is that true?
It's over 20 years.
Okay, I just want to throw something in that's really important, because I totally agree with what Dr. Santalisa is saying. My son was in the program, I think about 20 years ago, and I will tell you, he's the doctor in New Mexico. And the program, and with the help of these other programs, are absolutely outstanding. I, his picture is still hanging in Northrop Grumman as a student from Poly. But I'm just saying, I wanted to add that little piece. What I want to say, that my hand was out for, it would be great if you could gather all of the work that's been done and the students who have been successful or have gone through the program through the years. Some of these people who are listening to us right now may not know exactly what we're talking about. They need to know what we do, how we do it, more information. We don't share, we hear the negative things going on in Baltimore City. We, this is, this is one of our outstanding programs. Why isn't it on evening news? We need to list and say the names, the places our students graduate and go to, and how well they do because of our programs, because of the many programs. Okay, that should be the lead on all news stations. And I'm so tired of being the negative, but we have so many positives. So, you know, I'm just saying, I mean, I would be remiss if I didn't say this, but the programs are outstanding, and we should, you should let us know, or the community and community know the students who have been, who have been successful in the program.
I will say to that Commissioner, to Commissioner Reed's point, one of the things he wanted to know about was that family and support issue. And one of the things that Ingenuity does do well, because they've been in existence for over 20 years, is they have a vast alumni association that they do call upon to mentor younger, newer students. And I've seen Ingenuity up close for 22 years, because I was at Poly the first year I taught, so I've seen them for 22 years. They're a better organization today than they were 22 years ago. They are much more attentive to the social, emotional needs of their gifted learners. We're a better district because they're part of our district, but they're a better program because they're part of our district as well.
Exactly. I understand that. Antoine Bondima, he's a part of your program. I just want to say that.
Commissioner Griffin?
Yeah, I just want to say hi to Mr. Jutress. I was at Poly when you were there. I didn't have you as a teacher.
I recognized you, and I, congratulations on your appointment to the board, and I was actually, a lot of friends, a lot of Facebook friends of yours and colleagues. So yes, maybe it's not a good thing you didn't have me, maybe it's a good thing, I don't know. But hopefully, hopefully you heard good things about me when you were at Poly.
I did, I did. You were an amazing teacher. Your students always raved about you, and I was slightly jealous.
That's okay, you turned out fine.
Thanks. I do, I do want to say, like, what's bubbling up for me from this conversation? And it kind of goes to what you were talking about, Dr. Santalisa, is the other programs that are also servicing our students in this way, and just knowing more about those and where they are, so people can really see. Because I think one criticism that has been for our gifted programs is that they tend to lie more in affluent areas or the white L. And being able to have a map of where those programs actually are, you know, to dispel that or just give that information to the public and for the board, I would love to see something like that, because I know that they are out there. There's a lot of great work going on, like you said, Commissioner Bondima, in our district. And to see the other end of the spectrum too, like, not only do we support our students who need the extra support, the remediation, the catching up, the restoring and reconnecting, we also support our students who need the extension, the, okay, I'm done, and now what? Those students also need support. And so I would love to see a possible, like, asset map of those programs and where they are, so we can really have a full picture of what's happening in our district. So, and thank you for your work, Mr. Jutress.
My pleasure, and I enjoy, I love working in Baltimore City Schools. I love the progress that we've made. I may be out of turn here, but since Dr. S went on about me, I do want to praise the work that she has done, that she's opened herself to the conversation around gifted educators. I had an opportunity to present at Hopkins today and talk to a leader in gifted education yesterday, along with my colleague Ray Leimer, and we just raved about the fact that we have the bandwidth, we have the flexibility. We don't have a superintendent, a CEO, who sees the negatives, who actually allows us to thrive, is incredibly supportive. So it's a pleasure to work for this board and for Dr. Santalisa in particular. So while there are obstacles, I welcome them because I feel very empowered by all of you today and every day.
And Commissioner Bondima said something that's really, really important, I think, for everyone, is Fox 45, this is a great opportunity for them to look at a success story. They try to find the problems, but I would challenge Fox 45 to look at Ingenuity and other programs we have for advancing kids in Baltimore City. I challenge Fox 45.
Okay, well, on that challenge, is there a motion to approve item 12.02? Are there any other questions? Are we ready to vote on this one?
So moved to Reed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Griffin.
Thank you. And those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
James? Okay. McFadden?
Yes.
Okay, Reed?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, I'm in favor. Any opposed, abstaining? Okay, is Commissioner James still with us, or is she having? I don't see her. Okay, so this motion passes. We have eight in favor and one absent. Okay. Okay, I'm now going to go in back in order and turn it over to the Office of New Initiatives for the presentation on school renaming and commemoration requests for James Mosher Elementary and Calverton Elementary Middle and William C. March. And remember, this is combining 8.03 and also reference to 9.02, I think.
Good evening. I'm Angela Everas. I'm the Executive Director from the Office of New Initiatives. I'm going to invite Lindsay Anderson for my staff.
Good evening, everybody. This is Lindsay Anderson with the Office of New Initiatives.
And we also have Principal Logan and Corey Leach from Mosher with us. I'm going to have them introduce themselves.
Good evening, everyone. I am Denisea Logan, the principal at James Mosher Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Corey Leach, I'm the Community School Site Specialist with James.
Can you guys see the presentation?
Yes.
All right, so the first thing we're going to talk about is renaming requests for James Mosher Elementary School. Give an update on where we are with the Calverton process. As you guys know, the background is these, there are three school communities that have been, that are 21st century school communities and are, have been coming together in a different way. So we have Alexander Hamilton, who set the clothes at the end of this year, and whose students in grades, pre-K through grade two, will be attending James Mosher this fall. James Mosher will be in Early Learning Center in the fall. And then we have Calverton, which is currently serving students in grades three through eight, and the Alexander Hamilton students will become part of that school community. As part of this change process, we have school communities think about their identity and the naming, and so that's part of what we're going to be talking about today. And, you know, these schools will be in their new buildings this fall, which is a lot of kind of exciting events happening this year for us to all be proud of, and our big major events. And another, since we were talking about things that should be in the news, like, I don't know any other district that's doing this kind of 21st century work that we, that we are, and prioritizing communities that have had less investment. So that's, you know, been at the forefront of 21st century work, and so we need to always talk about it and be proud of it because it's important. And I'm going to have Lindsay kind of talk through the process.
So the renaming policy requires that we obtain approval by leadership to go forward with the renaming process. A renaming committee must be formed, and the renaming committee at Mosher consisted of parents from James Mosher, community partners, including the president of the James Mosher Baseball League, staff, and then the 21st Century Team also was a part of this process as they've been working really closely with, with James Mosher and with Alexander Hamilton and Calverton on their transition. We had several meetings, as you'll hear about later in the presentation, several meetings with community partners and at the school, where we talked about the process, and there were a few rounds of voting that the community participated in. We shared the request February 9th as information, and we're coming back tonight to share the name that the community has voted for and asked you to vote on that name.
One of the big things that's an important part of the policy is that school communities consider, as part of their consideration, the names of people that we, as a district, have sought to honor. We have school names in the past who don't have schools currently named after them. So they start with, you know, consideration of the schools that you see on this slide. So that was an important part of the process. And then they, you know, kick off a really robust engagement process that started in January, and it's culminating tonight. And I'm going to actually turn it over to Principal Logan and Corey, Ms. Leach, to talk about what that process was like.
So in mid-January, we started to introduce the process to our school community. We had a series of community meetings, pretty much like town hall meetings. We also, we also went to the Community Association Meeting, via Zoom, of course, to introduce it to our community members and ask them to share with their broader networks. In the month of February, we did our first round of voting, which was really interesting. We put out a solicitation to get names, and then we had about 12 names that were voted upon, and that was during the first round. And then the second round, we came back and we invited our neighboring community schools to also participate in the second round of voting. During the second round, we had narrowed it down to four names as well as James Mosher. So our students, as well as the students from Alexander Hamilton, Calverton, and we even extended to Lockham &amp; Bundy to participate, along with the family members and the community members. And so I'm following along the timeline. During the final round of voting, as you'll see a little later, the adults were kind of split, and then we had a clear winner once our babies had an opportunity to share their votes in their voice.
Some of the considerations, so we wanted to make sure we understood, like, who James Mosher was, and that was a big kind of point of conversation. So what we know about him, there's not a lot to know about him because he's a person of the 1800s, but what we do know about him is that he was a businessman. He was a city council representative for Baltimore City, and he fought in the Revolutionary War and the War of 1812. The, is, the James Mosher Baseball League, which started in the 1960s, is a strong partner, as Principal Logan talked about, with the school and with the broader school community. It's the oldest continuously operating African-American youth baseball league in the country. And so Mosher, that name, has significance to them. James Mosher, you know, was one of the first schools when we started integrating as a school district to serve Black students and to become predominantly Black when that change happened. And so it's been a long part of serving our students, and so that's an important part of history that we wanted to make sure that we understood. And just thinking kind of carefully about how the, we memorialize that kind of legacy in this process. So that was one of the key things. There is a lot of community, do you want to add something, Principal Logan? Sure, sorry. Go back.
So we, our goal is to definitely honor James Mosher, the name, as well as the runner-ups, Idar Coming, Tom Miller, and Henry Adelax, within the building. We are going to dedicate spaces. We don't have those spaces chosen just yet because we do want to work with our school community to make sure we choose the right spaces to honor, and those names will serve in those spaces in the building. Just wanted to add that, Angela.
And so you see here the results of the voting, and I'm actually going to see, Ms. Leach, if you want to talk a little bit about that, but you did like a lot of work to get all of these votes and this engagement happening, and so I want to give you a chance to talk a little bit about that. And so I want to give you a chance to talk a little bit about that.
Thank you, Angela. So the way our voting process went, so for, as far as the students, like our, our James Mosher students, I set the link up in Class Dojo, sent it to every teacher and ensured that the teachers were handing out, not handing out, but like administrating the voting links, making sure they get their students to vote. And I also popped in a few classrooms and had the students vote like, probably like five minutes in class. That way, you know, we make sure that we get all the votes. And as for the staff and parents and community, well, the staff was easy. The parents, we sent it out. We put it in Class Dojo on the parent page in Class Dojo. We also sent in emails. And the community, we sent it to our community partners and they sent it out to all the community groups, all the neighborhood associations. So that was like really, really nice. And we got a lot of support and votes in front of the community. I got a lot of emails with community members asking me about more information about the other names. So it was like, you know, at first, they really wanted to keep the name James Mosher. But then when, once they were asked some questions and doing their research, it was like, okay, well, maybe, you know, Idar Cummings or Billie Holiday really reflects our community and us as a whole, our culture, our heritage, more than James Mosher. So, and that's how they got to be like in the lead. And ultimately, you know, they decided with Billie Holiday. She's a Baltimore native. You know, she did, she was a rights activist. She did a lot of great things. And I, and I feel like, they feel like it's, you know, a good reflection on them because she represents the people, the struggle, the overcoming, everything that she can. And did everything her power was, so she died for her people.
So there was 417 people that participated in the voting and more than that that were engaged in this process. And so, you know, I mean, I don't know, Principal Logan, if you want to say a little bit more about Billie Holiday's legacy and how it connects to your vision for the school.
Okay. So I'm sure that most people on the call, they're familiar with Billie Holiday and her contribution to the musical world and that she's a global and a local icon. She's a hero for us. And just to add, when I speak about a hero, one area that we really wanted to focus on when we were thinking about a new name for the school was that we would possibly really want to have our school represented by a female. Well, we would like a female to represent our school. If you notice, a lot of the names are African-American male names. And that was very important for us as a school community. So yeah, she is a hero. And a large portion of her life was spent not too far, about two, two and a half miles from our school in West Baltimore. So we're really excited about that. So once our children had an opportunity to learn more about her during Black History Month, our student council went in and did some presentations. And then we talked about the rich history of the arts in West Baltimore. We were really connected, the children were really connected to Billie Holiday. And so many of you may not know that she was very influential in the civil rights movement. She actually was able to use her voice in a non-traditional way. Instead of creating a traditional speech, she was able to use her platform of song, like song, and just was able to speak to the people through a song. And we, and that strange fruit is listed right here. So with arts integration on the forefront for us as a school, as we move into our new space, we really, really, really embrace this quote that's here. If I'm going to sing like someone else, then I don't need to sing at all. And so as a school that's going to be opening up in West Baltimore and we're going to be servicing our primary babies, we want to provide something that's unlike any other school in the district. We want to make sure that our babies have a really rich experience in the arts as they're trying to learn to read. Billie didn't know how to read. Our babies are coming to us that way. Learn to use their gifts that are untapped. Billie didn't, no one helped her to tap into her gifts. She actually was self-taught. So when we get our babies, they're coming to us this way. And we really, really, really want to promote them expressing themselves through the arts while learning in a very special place.
And then the other thing I want to just be clear about too is she stands the test of time record. So she's a person who lived a short life. But the impact of her legacy has existed at least six, you know, six decades past her death. And so, you know, she is, you know, internationally known and has, you know, touched both the arts and her importance in the civil rights movement. You know, has just been a big part of her legacy that continues through today. And it's continuing to impact that work. So that, that time test part, she meets that standard. And so with that, so Billie Holiday Elementary School would be the new name. And so we're asking you, as the board, to approve this request. And so now we need you to vote.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve this item? Item 8.33, the renaming of James Mosher Elementary to Billie Holiday Elementary School.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'd like to second that, Richardson.
Thank you. I'm going to do this the opposite way. Is anyone opposed? Is anyone abstaining?
I would like to abstain, Madam Chair.
Okay. Then this motion passes? We have eight in favor and one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Logan.
Thank you.
You have another.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Looking forward to visiting your new school in the fall.
You're welcome to come on over.
Madam Chair, could I say something really quick before she hops off? It's Commissioner Griffin.
Uh huh, go ahead.
I just want to say, I'm so happy to see this choice. When I was a kid, I participated in the Billie Holiday, like song contest. And we got to dress up like her and impersonate her. And so I've always loved her as a hero in Baltimore City because she was a real person and she lived a real life. And it speaks to our experience here. So congratulations on the renaming. And I can't wait to see how the school, school is going and how the kids are enjoying it.
Now, Commissioner Griffin, you now have to sing the song you sang when you were impersonating.
Listen, we got quite a few singers on the board now. Commissioner Griffin, you got pulled out.
We must hear this song.
It was "God Bless the Child."
Okay, give it, give us a little bit. Give us a little bit.
Okay.
Listen, don't call me out. I know we got to move. God bless the child that's got his own, that's got his own.
Thank you, all right.
Commissioner Griffin.
I love it.
This is, this is almost like being at the, at a ship, you know, where we, we don't have the bottle of champagne, but we had the, had the voice of Commissioner Griffin. So thank you so much. I think we have an additional portion to the presentation that we want to do that covers the other items. If you want to go ahead and complete.
Just one more thing for Calverton, which was part of what we brought originally. We'll be bringing that next month. We just needed a little bit more engagement with the school community to make sure we're aligned to the policy and that sort of time test that we talked about tonight. And so the last thing is an informational item on a commemoration. It's for the Williams C. March Memorial Campus. So one of the first acts we did under the 21st Century Plan was the closure of the Williams C. March Middle School Program, which closes in school year 1213. As part of that work, you know, community engagement is a big part of that. District leadership at that time approved that the Hartford Heights campus would be renamed, the Williams C. March, for Williams C. March, when Hartford Heights opened as a 21st century school building. And so it's set to open this fall. And, you know, this is aligned to our, trying to maintain the history of school names and honoring that legacy as well as to a commitment that the district made back in 1213. And so we wanted to make sure we presented it publicly and on the record so that the information is codified for people to find that through time. And so thus, the name of that campus will be the Williams C. March Memorial Campus. And there will be a commemorative signage that, you know, displays that name in the school building. And we're also working with the school community and how to maintain a legacy of, of March within the building itself. The school will still be Hartford Heights Elementary School. And so we wanted to make sure that we just were on the record of sharing that for numbers who may, just for the public who may not know as much about Williams C. March. You know, he's also an important part of Baltimore history. People may be familiar with the March Funeral Homes, you know, that we see around the city that he founded. It was really important to Black families and creating opportunities for families to, to have that service who couldn't afford it. And it was also like a major business. It made him one of the, he was like one of the largest Black-owned funeral service companies in the country as a result of opening March and a leader in his industry and really led other Black people into the world of business and how to set up businesses. He also co-founded Harbor Bank of Maryland, which was the city's first Black bank and one of the few remaining Black-owned commercial banks around today. I know that's something we talk a lot about today, is Black entrepreneurship. And so he had, you know, really was a strong leader. He also was really civically minded. He established a few scholarship funds at Parlor Lawrence Dunbar High School and Frederick Douglass. They're in the honor of his sister, Thelma March. Is the name of the scholarship fund. And he also just gave a lot to the city. He helped reclaim some historic sites for us within the city of Baltimore. So really important person. And so we just wanted to be on the record about this commitment and why it was important to maintain it. So I don't know if there's any questions.
Thank you, yeah. Any other, any questions? Thank you. And good work. And yes, Commissioner McFadden?
I just wanted to, to, to Ms. Alvarez, to Angela, I know that we've mentioned before, like some of the original placards that were in some of the facilities. If we could maintain them and perhaps put them in some of our buildings. That, I just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's a good point. And we'll follow up with Dorothy Hellman's team and our design construction team. They'll, they'll be the teams that will be doing that. But we'll make sure that we connect with them. And I'm sure they're also listening.
Just because I think it just helps to maintain some of the history of, of the community that, that can stay in those buildings while we do make some changes to the structure and to the name.
Yeah, and I do think they do some of that. I just don't know as much about that. I think Cindy Smith is actually on. I don't know if you want to speak, but I recall being in the building where, where that's a part of that. And so Cindy, I don't know if you want to just say a little bit more about that process.
I'm actually on, I'm sorry. So I'm Cindy Smith. I'm the director of design and construction. And actually, that is part of our standards. We do move the plaques from any of the existing sites to the new buildings. Or if it's a renovation, we put the new one next to the existing one so that there is that history of the existing with the new.
And Renee C. Martin confirmed in the chat that that's happening too for this one, so.
Okay. Thank you again for the, for the work that was done to the communities for their involvement in this process. And we look forward to you coming back with, with the next one that we have to do and, and those to follow. And as you said, this is all a part of, of an effort that is really outstanding for a city to see as many new buildings, 21st century school buildings that we, that we are opening and having to consider names for. So thank you.
Thank you.
Alvarez. To the board, is there a motion now to approve the remaining consent agenda?
Someone, Richardson?
And a second?
Robert.
Thank you. And those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, and I'm in favor. So this motion passes. And I'm in favor. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm now going to turn it over to the Office of Communication, Engagement, and Enrollment for a presentation on the first reader of Policy KCA, the Family and Community Engagement. We've, we've heard a little bit from the community in terms of the comments prior. But so now we'll have the official presentation. So, High Hubbard, I believe you, are you the lead for this one? And welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to start us out and then I'm going to invite Jessica Lawrence to present. So, good evening, commissioners and public. We are here to present the first reader for Policy FCE KCA for the Family and Community Engagement Policy. We are very, very excited about this policy revision. It's been about 10 years since we've actually revised our Family and Community Engagement Policy. And we have an opportunity tonight to really change the way we are doing Family and Community Engagement work. I will just say that our policy has been touted across the country as a very strong policy as it was. And so our revisions for this evening, we're very excited to share, have been, I think, take it to the whole next level around, as Dr. Tablon shared, community engagement, youth engagement, and other things being highlighted that weren't necessarily highlighted before in the deck. Jessica, do you want to go to the first slide, please?
Absolutely.
So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jessica. And then I will be here to answer any questions or thoughts. But I just want to say that this is a compilation of all of our community engagement work with the community schools, work right, our family and community engagement work, our communications work, frankly, and our whole team coming together to really think about how we can have robust family and community engagement. So I will turn it over to Jessica.
Thank you so much, Chief High Hubbard. And good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. Our agenda is really simple. We'll walk through the current policy and review the recommended revisions and share updates on our progress for stakeholder engagement, on the review process, and then next steps. We've heard through our feedback over the last few months that some stakeholders may not know about the policy. And that's okay. So we want to honor that feedback and share a quick review of what's in the policy right now. As Chief High Hubbard mentioned, this policy was established in 2009 to ground our district in what family and community engagement should look like. As a parent, I'll just quickly add, I can remember attending information sessions for my children to join a school-family council organization. I didn't know anything about it. But once I was engaged, it was an awesome experience. And I really felt like, and did in fact, experience voice in my school community on behalf of my family and other parents in our school. So I just wanted to name that this policy has a lot of great things in it, as Chief High Hubbard mentioned. And some of the current focus areas include, in comparison to other districts, a lot of things that we just don't see nationally around our work. So we have, of course, training and distribution of family learning materials, school-wide planning and alignment to academic goals, Title I parent and family engagement, data sharing through the annual survey. There's a process for parent complaints and concerns, two-way communication. Again, we've established and required decision-making and advocacy in schools through school-family councils in every school and program. And the principal selection process, we've learned two years ago at Harvard University that this is really unique to Baltimore City as a way for parents to have voice and decision-making in schools. And so we're very proud of where the policy is right now, but we know we need to do more. A lot has been done. And we know that schools need our support, coaching, and guidance and collaboration. So we're naming in this process that there are gaps. And so we're hopeful that through the review process and what you'll learn in this first reader, that, you know, we'll be able to demonstrate that we're co-creating implementation strategies that reflect the uniqueness. implementation strategies that reflect the unique needs and voices and experiences of all stakeholders and staff for this work. And I'll also just share that our work looks really different. Our work has changed. We have a new structure. We have youth engagement and other focus areas that sit in our department. And so there's some recommended focus areas for revisions to the policy that should be included. We have a new strategy for family and community engagement and that is the dual capacity building framework for family-school partnerships. And while the policy was extremely innovative at the time of its development, we know that we have to bring it up to speed with what our, what our work looks like right now. And so right now, what we have represented in the Engagement Office is youth engagement. And so what does that look like for our policy? We are calling out youth and adult partnerships. We have a new equity policy. And so all of our implementation strategies have to be aligned to that and you'll learn more about what that looks like shortly. Multilingual engagement, identifying and addressing barriers to family and community engagement through our family surveys, neighborhood engagement, community relations, building strong academic partnerships through family engagement, improving parent experience, and again, making sure that we're targeting our supports and making sure that everything is aligned to what we're hearing from families and staff who have to live it every day. And so let's walk through the updates to the purpose and the policy. And one of the things that's really important for our work is to make it clear that family and community engagement is an essential component of high-quality teaching and learning. It is through authentic partnerships with staff and stakeholders that we are really able to see our students reach their full potential. We cannot do it without families. And so it's important for us to have that noted explicitly in the policy and the revisions. Also, family and community engagement is a shared responsibility. It's everyone's work, all stakeholders. And we know that in order to get there, we have to really move beyond the words and it requires a shift in mindset. And it has to be experienced as part of our instructional strategies. And so to get there, we know that all of our stakeholders and staff have to have an opportunity to develop the knowledge and skills to engage in effective partnerships. And so this acknowledgement is carrying most of what you'll see in the revisions. In terms of the updates to the policy standards, we have expanded language to reflect the fact that stakeholders and staff are key partners in the decisions that impact children and families collectively. And when we work together to co-create and inform policies and programs, we have improved outcomes for young people. And so to do so, there have to be opportunities for stakeholders to work collaboratively to support academic achievement for all students. And stakeholders and staff have to be invited and encouraged to participate in decision-making in their school communities. There are also updates to collaboration with our Parent and Community Advisory Board to allow for additional meetings by mutual agreement. And we have expanded language that helps us unpack and understand how well we're doing as a district around family and community engagement, the data and how we're using it to improve. Lastly, we are using this information to make sure that we can chorus correct and make improvements where needed to make sure that we're effective in our practices and approaches for family and community engagement that are outlined in these recommendations. There are some new key terms that were not there before. I mentioned earlier that we have a new structure for the Engagement Office. So you'll see definitions for community and neighborhood engagement, community partners as our faith leaders, grassroots organizations, businesses, neighborhoods, volunteers, and other individuals that help wrap around our school communities. Family engagement, which is a critical part of the policy as it lifts up how we build the capacity of our families and caregivers to support learning at home. And we do this through building strong academic partnerships. Family-school partnerships is a new term that's defined as those collaborative relationships and actions that include our staff, parents, and other family members. School community, we are defining that as our school staff, students, families, community partners, and neighborhoods, stakeholders. Again, those are our parents, families, youth, and community partners. I'm calling this out because this is new language and we want to make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to see themselves in this policy. We've added youth and students as a new term that's included throughout the policy as well as youth and adult partnerships, as those opportunities for adults to effectively engage with students in a way that honors their voices and needs. Now I just want to quickly walk through some of the key components and the revisions, which include aligning all of our implementation strategies and goals and plans to the equity policy. We use the equity questions to drive our stakeholder engagement process and also some of the revisions that you'll see later on. We need to establish a common definition of family and community engagement, which is in progress until we are finished with the engagement around the revisions to the policy. Youth engagement and decision-making is reflected, revamping our school family councils, training, and professional development again for all, and expanding community partnerships and strengthening two-way communication and language access. These next few slides, I'll get into some of the key components of the revisions and those items that I just mentioned. So for youth voice and engagement, we've prioritized this in elevating the roles of students in our school family councils. People really have to be ready to do this. This is new and so we can't do it until we build capacity of the adults at every level in our organization as well as in our schools to truly value the voices of our young people. And also, our district must encourage their equal partnership in promoting active student engagement. So again, professional learning and training for all stakeholders and staff around our work is what is anchoring the policy. And so we've also heard from families is that they would like to understand and know more about academic milestones. So the Family University will continue to serve as a way for families to access this information to support learning. There will also be trainings held in every school in partnership with our key points of contact to ensure that families have access to school-specific resources and information to support student learning. Community engagement and partnerships, we've added language that tracks and monitors our partnerships and volunteers so that school teams can access assistance and partnership information in one place when they need it. There will also be training and guidance on how to align those partnerships to school-level priorities and student learning goals. For decision-making and advocacy, we have been working for about nine months with a collaborative work group to revamp our school family councils. We're rebranding them. We got a new name from that feedback that they should be known as School, Family, and Community Councils to be reflective of all stakeholders and staff that serve in that capacity. We've heard from the community. We've added language in the policy that reflects our need to monitor and track decision-making in every single school, making sure that that information is accessible via the website, making sure that school family council chairs, meeting notes, agendas, meeting dates are publicized early and broadly across multiple platforms. And then we also are calling out in the policy for decision-making that we need to engage all stakeholders and staff in the budget process. In terms of data for family and community engagement, through our family survey, we are leveraging that information to improve how we support schools, making sure that folks have access to it beyond just the website, but principals and individuals who are responsible for the work actually can make meaning of the data that they collect from families and use it to improve their practice and supports. And then two-way communication, we've heard a lot from stakeholders throughout the review process and the development of this first reader that individuals want an opportunity to be able to share with us how we can communicate. And so we've added language to the policy that calls out the need to be able to jointly develop in partnership and in community with stakeholders, an annual district-wide communications plan to improve two-way communication. And that has to include, again, training and professional development for school teams as well as all stakeholders on how to communicate in the ways that work for stakeholders. Language access and multilingual engagement, making sure that our English learner families have access to the information that they need to support their students' learning and also developing trainings and programs that strengthen EL family engagement across our schools. And so what you've heard so far is a lot about what our work should look like, but that has to actually translate into how schools can take what's in this policy and actually see it through. So right now in the first reader, there is a little bit of information about the language access process, but we're still building that out and that's something that you'll see later on once we continue to get feedback and we're collaborative, collaboratively to update that information. Most of what I've mentioned sounds like a lot. And so we know that we have to have designated points of contact to help see this all through. And these points of contact that are listed here, FCE Liaisons, Partnership and Volunteer Leads, Youth Engagement Leads, their roles that are already in play right now in school, but we're adding them to the policy to make sure that everyone is clear on who does what in our department and how they can get the support that they need around elevating youth voice, family engagement, and partnerships. And then lastly, alignment of our family and community engagement planning. The current policy has a lot of requirements. There is a homeschool compact. There's a Title I parent and family engagement plan. There, we have a community schools action plan. We've heard through our feedback that this is just too much. There are so much thing, there are so many things that families have to be responsible for knowing, staff have to be tuned into. And so what we've heard is that we have to have one place, one all-access resource that's informed by stakeholder feedback that families can access school-level priorities, information from their school performance plans, parent rights and responsibilities, two-way communication. All of those things should be in one place. And we have a little slide that we want to share to help folks understand what that one plan could look like. Here are some of the updates that we've made based on feedback from the Board's Policy Committee. For decision-making and advocacy, we've expanded student participation so that in our middle and high schools, every school family commu, I'm sorry, every school family council will have at least two student representatives. And then in our elementary schools, there will be at least one student representative. We've heard this from multiple stakeholder groups that we really, really need to have student presence and we have to provide the support for them to be able to participate and lift their voices in our councils. And then also elevating stakeholder and staff engagement in the budget development process early and often. And then leadership and capacity building. We have expanded language to build the capacity of parents and families and youth and leadership and organizing and engagement. We've heard through the public comment tonight, you know, every school should have a parent leader or an individual that can access information to take back and serve as a point of contact. And so you'll see that expanded in the policy as well. And then alignment of FCE planning. I mentioned all of those different plans. And so this graphic here will just kind of outline everything that is existing right now. And so I just want to quickly call out these three different things that are requirements in most of our school. If you're a community school, you would have a community schools action plan. But if you are not, these two plans right here, the family engagement plan and the homeschool compact are current requirements in our policy. And so what we've learned is that we just need to have one integrated plan that includes students, family, staff, and community partners. It's jointly developed by those individuals. It addresses the board policy requirements for family and community engagement. It meets all of the federal and state requirements to include, you know, making sure that those academic goals and family engagement goals align in a school performance plan, budget engagement and school-wide planning. It aligns all of the youth and community and family partnership works. And it also should eliminate gaps and duplications in our programming. And most importantly, this should inform all staff and stakeholders of their roles and responsibilities and supports for family and community engagement. And so we're very excited about this one plan. It's in the early stages, but we really just need to make sure that everyone understands it. And I want to also name that this one plan does not replace the three things that you see there. It just brings it all together in one place. One second. Got a little one right here. Hang on, baby. And so really quick, I'll talk about the key components and revisions in the regulations. And so you can expect to see detailed guidance and expectations for decision-making and advocacy. We have been working with, thank you. We have been working with a work group to make sure that our school family councils are robust and that they are reflective of the needs of their school communities and that they are operational. We are also adopting the dual-capacity building framework for family-school partnerships to guide implementation of this policy. And we're authorizing hopefully the creation of this one school-family and community partnership plan with details about what should be included in those plans for stakeholders and staff to understand it. There will be language for outlining school-level and district-level responsibilities for training around this policy and also the day-to-day work of the policy. And then details for our plan to strengthen two-way communication and language access. And then most importantly, we need to make sure that we are monitoring and tracking the progress and effectiveness of this policy. And so we hope to be able to do that through the creation of a family and community engagement rubric and assessment tool. Again, we can't get too deep into the development of those items until we really, really have a sense of what the implementation strategies will be. But we'll be working alongside stakeholders and parent leaders, P-CAB, C-CAC, and other groups to make sure that as we go along, we can continue to build out the rubric and assessment tool as well as what that school-family and community engagement partnership plan could look like. Ongoing focus areas for the feedback process include quite a bit. We're not done. We're still getting feedback. This work is ongoing. And so one of the things, again, I mentioned that we need to finalize that plan. We have to develop guidance and protocols for ensuring language access. We have to create the rubric and align it to the final policy. And we have to outline our partnership resources and supports for non-community schools. And most importantly, we are working to develop a policy implementation and outreach plan. This is a lot. This policy looks completely different than the existing policy in a lot of ways. And it has a lot of moving pieces and parts. We have a new department and so we want to make sure that the implementation plan is clear for every single stakeholder and easy to follow and understand and folks can be a part of the process. We have done a massive amount of stakeholder input and engagement around the policy. Again, it is still ongoing. In terms of parent advocacy group, I think we've touched quite a few. There's some that are not mentioned here, but we'll get those updates. But I do want to call out and thank Latino Uno for their partnership and some of the parent leaders that have been engaged in our focus groups, Baltimore City PTA, P-CAB, Teachers Democracy Project, Hispanic Advocates, and C-CAC for being right at the table with us to hold us accountable and get the feedback that we need. In terms of staff and family and community engagement points of contact in schools, we have heard from quite a few staff and representatives that are responsible for moving the work to include our teachers. We just did a meeting with BTU's building representatives to share where we are with the policy and hope to be going back to do some focus groups. We've talked to our FCE Liaisons and teachers, our school family council chairs, operators, charter school representatives, parent leaders, school-level points of contacts from partners, community schools coordinators. And there's more work that we have to do with our principals and district staff. and district staff as well. In terms of youth, our youth engagement team has been doing a lot of work. There's been town halls, multiple surveys, focus groups, and targeted touches with youth advocacy groups to get feedback on this policy. And then for parents and families, we're very proud of the touches that we've been able to have and that are still to come. We had questions in our family surveys that kind of get us the feedback that we need on parent experience and what folks are looking to see. We're joining P-CAB's monthly meetings. There's a lot going on. We've touched our Swahili-speaking families, French, Arabic, lots of engagement with our special education families through virtual stories, focus groups, one-to-one interviews, and more. In terms of community organizations and partners, we've engaged with the Baltimore City Climate Collaborative, Baltimore's Promise, our community advisory that has kicked off with multiple representatives from our faith-based organizations and neighborhood groups and key partners, Center for Urban Families, the Family League of Baltimore. And since this was submitted to the board, there has actually been a lot more feedback that we'll share the next time that we've come back and update this slide. In terms of next steps, we are going to get this first reader out to the community even more. We'll share it with school-based teams, make sure that it's posted on our partner pages as well as the district's website and social media. We are going to launch our family and community engagement advisory group to guide the review process and support with developing that implementation plan that I mentioned. And then we join P-CAB's monthly parent forums. We've been doing that since September. So we have a presence monthly for every stakeholder and parent to come in and ask us questions and get, you know, a first look at any revisions or next steps in this process. So that next opportunity is April the 15th at 6:00 PM. And then we're very excited to be part of Teachers Democracy Project's podcast on Monday. These are public forums, so we invite everyone who's listening, all of our parents, to join in and join the conversation with us. And then we're always collecting feedback from all stakeholder groups and staff to inform the next round of revisions. So I tried to get through this as quickly as I could, but that is my presentation. And I will share that we do have some team members from the engagement office who are on the call to help field any questions. And I'll turn it back over to Chief High-Cover. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Great job. Just a couple last statements. One, on the implementation plan, I want to be very clear about something. We're doing a lot of changes in this policy. And so while the policy, we hope to get passed this spring through this reader process, we know that over the summer months and into the fall, we are going to have to build the implementation plan that will actually go out probably two or three years. So we're going to phase in the work. One thing we've heard as part of our community engagement is a lot of folks are like, this is a lot. How are you going to do all of this work? And we agree, but it's about time and it's about phasing in the approach rather than saying the policy is adopted in June or whatever date it gets adopted, and then everything's going to change in July. That's not going to happen. What's going to happen is once the policy is done, that we're going to have work over the summer and the fall, as I mentioned, to really have a robust implementation plans. We would love to come back to the board in the fall when that plan is finalized so you can see the phase into this process and all of these great things that we want to have and gauge. Last thing I'll mention is that the engagement has been paramount to this policy. And I'm so proud of the team for the work that they have done around the robust and intense engagement across multiple stakeholder groups. And one group that Jess did not mention, which I wanted to flag, is that next week, she is, actually, it's Friday maybe even, she is presenting to the Mayor's Children's Cabinet as well, which is a cross-section of folks across the city, including myself, who are interested in sort of improving youth supports across the city. And so that's happening this week. So I will pause there, and we'd love to take any questions you have for us at this time. Jessica, both I are here to answer questions, and our team is here as well.
Yes, thank you.
Should we call on folks? I don't know if it was our process to do that. I see Commissioner Brooks is raised.
Hi. So first, just want to thank you so much for the wonderful presentation, Jessica. I've seen this, and it's been steadily growing and changing and shifting in really great ways. I do have a question, and it's probably going to be centered in sort of some of the practice that you all have had, sort of working with communities and getting the work done. And so knowing that, sort of, you know, we talk a lot about trust and trust-building and how important it is for folks to feel seen, heard, valued in the approach. And so I have also had the experience of being in the district and in meetings sometimes where so much of the content, let's say it's an hour meeting, and so much of the content, the majority of that meeting, say sixty, seventy, eighty percent of that meeting is tied up in content versus, you know, twenty minutes or so left over for sort of engagement and feedback. So I would, one, Chief High-Cover, I would love to hear, are there best practices that you've seen in the field around ratios that would allow enough time for a presentation and, but also enough time for people to feel meaningfully engaged? And then it's counter, well, the addition to that, is there a way for that to live inside, codified into the policy?
Thank you for that. And yes, I think there is a good practice around that. Of course, the policy, what we presented tonight is not what we would use as a regular engagement with folks because it is very long and detailed, but you need to have the whole detail. We actually have a rule around ten to fifteen minutes max for presentation, especially when you're doing a feedback so that folks can actually hear it. And we don't rush through it, but that we have ample time to really then answer questions. And what we found is people need to hear things more than once, right? So even if you say it in the deck, we, lots of times, we'll get the question several times over following that because they need to hear it a different way or a different approach or to clarify something. And so we like to say less is more in terms of the presentation. We like to say more graphics, less words. And I think that that can live in the regulations, not sorry, the policy, because the regulations is the how to what you just said in the beginning, right? The policy is the what, and the regs are the how. And so we could certainly put some recommendation of best practices in the regs around how community meetings are facilitated. That's a great suggestion. Jessica, do you want to add anything else to that?
No, I would just say that, you know, the challenges, you know, with the school year have really forced us to rethink how we communicate and engage families. One of the things that we've been doing for the focus groups for the policy is just what you mentioned. We send it around. It's translated. You get a chance to read an abbreviated version. You know, we try to pull out the key content that we want families to know or be engaged in. And then we come to the meeting and they feel like they're prepared to be able to engage in discussion and feedback with us. One of the things that we did first, we didn't go right out to get feedback on the policy. We went out to share the existing policy to actually get folks ready to be able to weigh in on any of the changes. And we heard that from the community. We didn't even know that there was the policy. So can you tell us what's in it first? And then we come, we went back to them and said, okay, now that you know what's in it, how does this work for you? How, what have you experienced? So I just wanted to just add that that is a best practice, and we're doing it right now. So.
Great. That's really helpful. And I think, you know, so we use policy to sort of systematize things, right? And so like, I would love for that to be a codified practice, no matter what presentation, district-wide, or the type of engagement a person is having, right? So that we, there's some way to systemically say, when we go out into community, we're not going to fill the air with so much talk and so much jargon. And then folks, you said, we engage, but we only had ten minutes left, and we couldn't get to no good stuff. So that's why I say there's a policy or sort of a larger structural solution that we might be able to implement. And that's why I asked about a best practice, because I think there is a way in which through sort of intention and sort of folks kind of moving about and different personality types, just something that allows us to, you know, is it a twenty, forty, sixty, you know, by an hour? You know, do you have fifty percent presentation, fifty percent dialogue? Or that sort of thing, to really try to systematize that. So it's less, less, it is not left up to chance and department and sort of people's sort of discretion to provide some more stronger guidance there. So I'm not, I'm not wed to that, but I do think there might be a larger structural solution through policy that might help us get to a better balance ratio so that people feel heard. Or rather, we create space for people to be heard.
Thank you. We'll make sure it's in the regs.
I'll just go ahead.
Commissioner Griffin, yeah.
Hello, hello. Good evening. So I have, I have a few questions that are really based on the feedback that we heard from the community, and some of them you answered, which I was happy to see. Like, some of those adjustments have already been made, which is amazing. And so one that I wanted, just clarification on, I kind of heard it, but I want to make sure. We heard in each one of the moments where folks came in to speak today that they wanted a parent, like leader or a school representative at each school. Is that something that we are definitely planning to make sure is a part of this process? Just so we can say it verbally so folks can hear it.
Yes, absolutely. Right now, we have an existing role that is in every school. That is a family and community engagement liaison. There are parent leaders who serve in that capacity right now. I think if, I think there may be about maybe fifteen to twenty parents who have signed up to be that representative in their school community. Principals have identified them. They've been trained. But in terms of the parent leadership, we are building out expanded language in the regulations that will call out opportunities for parents to attend an annual institute where they're trained in district policies and procedures and things that they need to know to be that point of contact and voice on that school-family council or in their organized parent group or PTA to be able to share out because that's that one person who, along with another team, the community schools coordinator, all of those points of contact make up that family and community engagement team in a schoolhouse. And they all have to have the same information, and parents have to have it too.
Exactly. And there, like, it would be, would it also be put in the regulations that their contact information would be shared so folks know who to get in contact with as far as parents?
Absolutely. There, there, I believe that there, there is information in the regulations in the school-family council section that calls out a page on the website where folks can be able to access that information openly and find out where to get assistance on how to get engaged in their school communities.
Okay. And can I just add quickly, Jessica, that not only are those people supposed to be working with parents, but they're also getting training from our office on how to engage staff with parents. So they're getting the tutelage from our team to be stronger advocates with staff so they understand that dual-capacity framework we talked about in the policy regs, right? That they are helping staff better connect with families as well. So direct connection to families and then direct connection through our training and supports to school-based staff to then better those practices of engaging with families across the board.
Great. And because we heard it so much, like, I just wanted to make sure we reiterated that, but also that it's very explicit wherever it is placed, that it's communicated to the school community, the parents, the students, the staff, who that is, where it's placed. Because I feel like there might be a disconnect there. Like, yes, we have some folks in place, and it's supposed to be done already, but for some reason, it came up multiple times in testimony. So we want to make sure that that's, that's a through line that's clear. I think the other thing, the other things that were brought up in testimony are more about implementation, but I just want to, like, re-raise them to make sure we're addressing them. It was a lot of the how. So like, how school councils, subcommittees function, the agendas, and needing more of that issue versus stakeholder time, like Commissioner Brooks was just saying. Just making sure that there is some kind of best practice that goes along with that. And I know in the training, the how of school councils' function would be covered, but in some place in the implementation plan or if it's in the regulations, like, that's clearly listed out. So it's a place where people can go to read about it will probably be helpful. Surveys and communication with families, like, we're seeing, like, people just want more, a little bit more versus the, like, you have the annual communication piece, but then there's the working together for the school performance plan that you mentioned that's being pulled into that one document. From what I understand, hearing the testimony, it was more around, like, are we coming back to that to see where we are? So some type of best practice around that in the regulations. And then the rest of it is more, more around, like, decision-making factors during the school year that parents just want to be aware of, understanding how to engage in, like, principal selection or contract selection, budgeting, all of those things. And I know I saw it mentioned in the presentation, but I just kind of wanted to lift it up so folks know we, we hear them in the testimonies and we understand where they're coming from.
Yep. And I appreciate that, Commissioner Rich. I'll go quickly, Jessica, and then you can go free to add in. One, I want to acknowledge something that's really critical here. School family councils in some schools work amazingly right now, right? And in some, let's be honest, they don't. And so part of the work of this policy and my team, right, is to make sure we shore that up. So we heard in our stakeholder feedback sessions, people said, well, they're not working well now, and you want to take them from here to here, right? So how does that work? And we acknowledge that's part of this process of the implementation strategy and the plan and the how of really putting, like you said, the plan in place to make sure that every school has the tools necessary to really have a really robust school-family and community council. I'm going to get used to saying that, Jess. School-family and community council. That is, it has representation that is actively engaging on budget and other things in the school. So that is part of the implementation plan. The thing I want to mention is we are, we're requiring that an annual survey be conducted by the district for the same way students get an annual survey and staff get an annual survey. That's the nod to that. But during this past school year, we've done three full-written surveys. We'll do two so far, right? Beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. And then we've done several POSAP texting surveys throughout the year to understand. Those practices aren't going to stop because we're not in a pandemic anymore or we're all back in person. We've learned so much from families this year. I heard a quote this week that said, y'all, I've had so much more communication with the district than I've ever had before, and I need to keep that going next year. Don't stop that just because we might go back in person. So we are cementing that annual survey, right, as the way in which the district will use it for almost accountability measures, if you will, right? It's a bigger survey that gets to principal accountability, school accountability, and that kind of thing. But that doesn't stop us from doing those regular pulse checks, those regular surveys. And part of the work that I'm doing with Patricia Jones right now is trying to figure out what our strategy is for engagement and stakeholder input moving forward into next year. And so we'll continue that through line. We'll just come back and let you know what that looks like. But that is a promise we'll make to the community.
Awesome. Okay, thank you. I'm glad to hear that. And I know they'll be glad to hear that, too. It's always better to communicate early and often because folks need to know what's happening. The only other piece that I'll put out there is the data sharing. I kept hearing, like, data, data, data sharing. And that may be at a school level, for schools to be able to share, like, what's happening with students, what grades are doing what, like, how is our attendance with their community and, and the broader community that surrounds them. And so I just want to kind of drop that nugget. It's not really a question. It's just raising it as a, as a flag to think about including. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Richardson, did I see your hand?
You did not see my hand, but I do want to say, since you called on me, that I appreciated the point, Chief High-Cover, that you made about how it looks different at different schools. And so I'm encouraged to hear that you all are factoring in ways to help bolster those schools that really don't know how to get this off the ground well, right? And for various reasons, right? Just can't get this off the ground. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing more parents participate in this school, what is it? School, family.
School, family, community. The only thing that's different is the community part, yeah.
Okay. No, I'm really looking forward to that. And I think as commissioners, right, especially as we roll out this recovery in our upcoming school year, this is one of the things that I think we should all have our eyes on. Because this, we are going to need all hands on deck, right, to recover a lot of what we lost. And so this is definitely an important key into that recovery. So thank you for acknowledging that. Thank you for thinking of that and having that foresight.
Thank you.
Chief High-Cover, quick question. Sort of, are there any sort of systemic mechanisms that we use to track when people don't feel like they're having a good experience with communication? And if so, what, what does that look like?
So we have not tracked it by individual school, right? We've tracked it through our survey mechanisms and through our POSAP surveys. We've actually asked parents directly, do you have? We've actually asked parents directly, do you have the information you need to engage your child's school, right? And we've actually dis-segated that data by school and given that to schools. As part of our Title I schools, just so you know, with part of our panorama surveying work. We actually have paid panorama through Title I dollars to go deep with the data with schools. So they understand what, how to respond to that data and how to, not just to the families, but how to respond internally to change practice, right? We did that sort of that last spring with our school uh, survey at the end of the year. And we continue to do that work through our budgeting this year. So we haven't done it from a district-wide perspective, but we're trying to help individual schools unpack that data and understand that work. And how their, how schools are experience, sorry, families experience their schools.
Great. And yeah, so I think from, from uh, my perspective, um, knowing what families, um, like what information they don't. Um, they feel like they need, but they don't have access to, or they, um, you know, I, I know we heard a lot about. And this is not the first time and it's been a year and a half since I've been on the board. Um, uh, the curriculum piece around like families needing additional support to support their students, right? And so that seems to be consistent um, sort of message. Um, you know, when the curriculum shifts, how, how, how am I supposed to support my child if I don't even know uh, what that, that change has occurred? And so I, I'm just curious, um, again, sort of, sort of both, you know, maybe it is on the management side of things. Um, uh, but also just thinking systemically, how do we um, get that out? And make sure that every school has access to the type of data that, that would allow families to say, I need more of this. And allow them to adapt through, through that process. And hopefully, I, I know you do um, really great work around um, community engagement anyway. So already using some of those tools that you do internally um, to prepare district or the, rather the schools themselves. To dig in with their own parents, um, and their own community members to figure out what's going on. Um, and so I, I, I don't know what the, the, the larger structure is. But I feel like, I think it would be beneficial for the district to.
Yeah.
Invest some thought into.
I could, I completely appreciate that Commissioner Brooks. I think there's two levels of data, right? There's school-based data and there's your own child's data. And I will tell you as a parent in the district, when I had a teacher tell me at one point in time. Um, that I cannot have access to my own child's already data, I was like, I'm sorry, excuse me, right? So let's be thoughtful about the fact that we need to be able to dis- sort of segregate the data for parents around their own children's progress. But also the school-based data, understand what their school is doing, moving and changing. We, before the pandemic, were working with the academics team to try to produce parent guides. So the parents actually understood what we're teaching their children and how to take that guide in. And then use that as part of their parent conferences and whatnot, right? So they could be more expert in the dialogue around schooling. Um, with Chief Nebraska coming on board, I'm very excited to work with her. She's pledged to help me figure out not only parent guides, but progress monitoring of our students. And how we use this new parent, I'm sorry, family communication policy and with academics. To really think about progress monitoring and how we communicate that with families in addition to what's being taught. So it's not just, I now have content knowledge about the curriculum, but now I can see how my child is progressing. So I don't wait till a quarter or a semester grade and now my child has failed and I haven't had that information. And so teachers need to be trained and supported in that too, right? How we do that progress monitoring and sharing. So that is a commitment that we're making. Again, it's part of our implementation strategy and plan. Um, because it's going to take a minute to sort of get those up and running and figure out what needs to be shared. But you elevated exactly where we are, Chief Nebraska and I, with Shayna and Jessica and team. Around figuring out how our two teams marry to actually make that happen.
Great, thank you so much.
I wanted to, I wanted to say, because I think um, Commissioner Brooks, it is a spot on point. Sometimes parents don't know what they don't know.
Right.
Right? And so you shouldn't have to have gone to college or school to study education. To know what does it look like when my kid is, is failing at something or advancing at something? What am I supposed to see at home that like that, that's my trigger to let me know to ask the question? And so um, I think that's great. I'm really looking forward to that, uh, your work with um, Chief. Uh, what's her last name? I'm sorry.
Debrauski.
Debrauski, yes, yes, yes. That would be great.
It just makes me think if that's also a part of the training that we give to our, our parent leaders, right?
Absolutely.
Because when you, when you go to our parent leaders who then have access to more of the parents at the school. Who would be able to also host more of those meetings and sessions and workshops with our support. Um, I think disseminating that information in that way, it's like peer-to-peer too. And so it kind of breaks down some of the, some of the barriers and the feelings of like, oh, that's coming from the district. Or you know, oh, this language I don't understand. So thinking about how we work with our parents and prep our parents to be those leaders in their community. To then create more um, of them and spread that knowledge that way. I think that would be a great part of the implementation into the training. But I agree Commissioner Brooks, looking at the broader system of like, how do we not only take that practice? On a school level, but on a district level to, to help us understand how we're better connecting with our parents in our community.
I, I'd like to add that I, I see that also, uh, Commissioner, I'm High Cupboard, I'm sorry, I'm Chief High Cupboard. Uh, in terms of the work that the parent leaders and the uh, liaisons do with the uh, with the staff, with the teachers. Because in many, you know, there are times where teachers also need the support as to how to explain uh, what they're doing. In a way that can be helpful for parents and not intimidating. Because for some parents, the fact that it's a teacher talking isn't, isn't intimidation. But it should, really should not be if we're trying to foster partnerships.
That's right. That's the essence of the dual capacity framework. So many places we try to equip parents, equip parents, equip parents. But we need to equip our staff as well in the language to engage so that we're all speaking the same language. I really appreciate you saying that Commissioner Chinia, because it is the right way to, it is the both and, right? Training staff and training families is the right way to go.
Right. Okay. Any other questions, comments on the board? Okay, if not, thank you. Uh, thank you, uh, Chief High Cupboard. Thank you, uh. Sorry, Ms. Lawrence. And uh, thank you to uh, to your team and to all the folks who have, I mean, the, the, the pages of uh, of. Folks who have already been involved in this work. It's just tremendous. And so I would encourage uh, my fellow board members, uh, we get those notices about some of the opportunities. We are part of the engagement and so please take advantage of those. We don't just have to wait until it's a presentation here um, at a board meeting. But thank you and we look forward to uh, the work that continues uh, as we come forward uh, in this process of uh. Renewing and, and proposing this new policy. Thanks for that. Okay. Uh, board members, I think we had, I'm moving along with the agenda. We had one um, one committee that met. And I didn't know if Commissioner McFadden wanted to say anything uh, concerning the teaching and learning committee?
Thank you, Chief Chinia. We had several different um, presentations on that particular um. During that particular committee meeting, um, it was a fairly long meeting, a fairly lengthy meeting. But the information was fairly substantive and important, the information that we received. Particularly um, around our English learners. Um, and one thing that we've learned is that our English learners, that population within our city schools community. Is the fastest growing population right now. Um, and tonight we um, looked at curriculum review and that was on consent agenda. Um, so we look forward to seeing how that uh, progress is made. Um, with that particular uh, population within our community. Um, and then we also learned that uh, our uh, teachers, the ESOL teachers. Um, that group has also doubled, which makes sense, right? As our population grows, we need to increase the amount of staff for that um, particular uh, population to service them relevantly. So we heard information on that, um, which was helpful. Um, and then we also uh, received a teacher and principal pipeline update. Um, and we're learning about the, the culture work that is happening within city schools. Um, and how we're really looking um, to grow internally. Um, the capacity of our staff and the professionals that are leading our schools. Both in the classroom and certainly for our buildings. Um, one thing I do want to do while um, while I have the, the opportunity is to celebrate again. Um, those resident principals um, of our student learning sites. As we start to think more of how do we develop internal pipelines? Those uh, leaders um, really did incredible work at a time. Um, where you know, things were as crazy as they possibly could have been. But knowing that our young people really benefited from being in those spaces under their leadership. And how they uh, cultivated teams um, and, and really fostered collaboration. Um, they're a group that I certainly believe that our school system, city schools has to invest in. So that we continue to grow their capacity so that they do more incredible work um, for a lot of our young people. I just want to celebrate those resident principals and the I O E D that worked with them. Um, Sonia Goodwin, who kind of led that work and also Cleo Hirsch. Um, so we heard about that and then finally, we received our middle of the year information, our middle of the year data. And what we do know is that a lot of our young people are failing several courses. Um, but at the same time, we're working to uh, to, to change that, right? We learned about an attendance strategy. Um, and how we have attendance buses and different strategies that the district is employing. But also local schools are employing to bring our young people back into our buildings. And engage our young people in more relevant ways. Um, and, and we're also learning, right? That although we have seen um, that, that shift in grades. We, we've also seen that we're closing the gap um, on the DIBELS assessment. That be from beginning of the year to middle of the year. Um, and so that's really, you know, dealing with some skills, some reading skills, I believe, um, literacy skills. Um, and city schools is moving three times the amount of students. Those students out of that well below benchmark category. Three times the amount um, nationwide of our, our, our jurisdictions that are similar to, to city schools across the nation. So although we have some challenges and we certainly know that we've got some work to do to recover and, and to. What did Dr. Santalisa say? Reconnect, re- uh, restore and reimagine. There are some great things that are happening as a result of the wonderful work that our teachers are doing. The wonderful work that our school leaders are doing and central office staff um, is doing. And then certainly on May fourth, we're going to receive an update about summer learning strategies. So I'm just encouraging the board um, to just tune in, pay attention as much as you can to some of the strategy and the work. Um, that will be happening to engage our young people throughout the summer. Um, and then finally, uh, Ramadan, Mubarak to our um, Muslim and, and Islam folks. Um, community members, uh, Ramadan Kareem or just Happy Ramadan. This is a very high holy period um, for, for those of the Muslim faith. And certainly we have several of those members, a lot of those members within our city schools community. So I just want all of us to be mindful of this time of solemnness and of prayer. Um, and of fasting, as certainly we know, our city and our community and our country just needs that type of um. That type of spiritual uh, uh, enlightenment right now. So whether we're Muslim or not, um, we do have community members that are participating in that. So it's important for us to be mindful of that as well.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, as you, as you mentioned, uh, the next teaching and learning committee. And I just want to uh, remind people of upcoming meetings uh, that we have. The Parent and Community Advisory Board, P-CAB, uh, will be meeting on Thursday, um, April the fifteenth. And as you heard, there will be an opportunity there for some of the engagement around the, the new uh, 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 family, community engagement policy. Uh, the operations committee will meet uh, on April the twentieth, which is a Tuesday at ten thirty. Sorry, P-CAB is at, at six thirty, uh, operations is at ten thirty. Policy, policy committee will be meeting also on April the twentieth at three thirty. The next uh, board meeting, public board meeting will be on Tuesday, April the twenty seventh. Uh, and uh, the public session is at five. Uh, there will be a uh, a, uh, a spring budget uh, board forum. On Tuesday, May the fourth at six PM. Uh, that will be in the evening and the teaching and learning committee, as was mentioned, will be three thirty um, in the afternoon. And so we, uh, public is invited to those. Remember the committee meetings, you're also invited uh, to give public comment. And the, and we, each of those committees uh, has a, we have a listing at the board office and online as to how you can sign up for public comment. Uh, not seeing of any other hands. Is there a motion uh, to adjourn for this evening? We have reached the end of our assistance.
So move on, Deema.
Thank you. Is there a second?
McFadden.
Thank you. And all those in favor, um, is there anyone opposed to adjourn? Anyone wanting to abstain from adjourn, adjourn? Then I think that we will, we will say that unanimously, we have voted to adjourn. I want to thank everyone. I want to thank uh, our, the commissioners. I want to thank all of the staff and presenters. Uh, thank all of the folks who brought us your comments. Thank all of you who have joined us uh, to observe the, uh, this meeting this evening. Uh, please stay safe and be well and we will hopefully see you very, very soon. At either one of the committee meetings or special sessions or the next board meeting. Uh, this meeting is adjourned in the evening, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.